We are now live.
Thank you very much, sir. Everyone, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. We are now going to move on to Item A2, which is our land acknowledgement. We recognize that we are presently on the lands of the Cho'chinwa Mo'ikma Karkin Aloni peoples and acknowledge them as the first inhabitants of the land we currently occupy. I would like to welcome everyone to the February 22nd, 2021 special board meeting. It's a study session on COVID-19 and schools. This is our third study session. Going to start with the mission statement of our district. The mission of the West Contra Costa Unified School District is to prepare students for post-secondary education and to be responsible, thinking, contributing members of our global society. We believe in public education as the most important function in a democratic society. We believe we must, one, treat everyone with courtesy, dignity, and respect. Two, provide safe and nurturing environments in which to learn, teach, work, and participate. Three, serve our students by working as partners with our community to develop well-rounded lifelong learners and contributing members of a global society. Four, take responsibility for our behavior and perform performance to ensure the highest possible achievement of all students, employees, and our school community. Five, provide equitable and essential communication and support for successful learning, teaching, working, and participating. Six, respect, celebrate, and welcome the diversity, uniqueness, and contributions of all members of our school community. Board members should not subordinate the education of children and youth to any partisan principal, group interest, or the member's own personal interest. This meeting will provide public comment opportunities through the Zoom app or by telephone. To indicate your desire to speak on an agenda item, raise your hand by clicking on the appropriate icon in the Zoom app or by pressing star nine if assessing the meeting by phone. In order to be recognized to speak, your hand must be raised before public comment begins for the item. To assess translation of the agenda, click the top of the webpage using the globe icon and word English for translation into multiple languages. Meeting interpretation services are available via Zoom by clicking on the globe icon at the bottom of the screen. Due to the Brown Act, board members cannot discuss items that are not on the agenda and do not usually respond to items presented in public comment. Now we are going to move on to Item A4, which is the roll call.
For President Phillips.
Here.
Trustee Clark Smith Folds.
Present.
Trustee Gonzalez Hoi.
Present.
Trustee Christian.
Present.
Trustee Reckler.
Good evening, present.
And I know we have our, one of our student trustees, Thomas Leong, is with us and we're trying to get him promoted from panelist. If he, ah, there he is.
Present.
Great, great to see you, Thomas. And I'm not sure if Navi will be joining us this evening, but we are all present and accounted for.
Thank you very much. With that said, we're going to move on to Item B1, which is COVID-19 in schools. This is our only discussion item. In keeping with what we've done throughout these study sessions, the board is here on this evening to learn. So there will be a period where we listen and ask questions, but there won't be board discussion tonight. There will be an opportunity again for public comment. So that said, we don't have, I mean, we have, I think, five speakers tonight. So this meeting is a little packed, but there's good information out there that I hope we're all able to receive. So with that said, I am going to invite the first speaker in this presentation, and that is the principal of St. Joseph's School in Pinole, California. The principal is Natalie Lenz.
Point of, point of order or privilege, I don't know which one, trustee.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, do we have built in a break or no? Because I would hate to miss any other presentation. Do we have a break built in since there's no board discussion?
I do not know. That is, I don't know. I don't know.
Thank you.
Okay, so again, I would like us to all welcome Ms. Natalie Lenz Akuna, who is the principal of St. Joseph's School in Pinole, California. Ms. Akuna, do you want to share your presentation yourself or do you want staff to share the presentation for you?
Yeah, I can go ahead and share it myself. That's fine.
Okay, thank you very much, Ms. Lenz Akuna. Staff, can you give her sharing privilege if she doesn't have it already?
Other than Phillips, she should be able to share her screen.
Thank you, sir.
Can you see my screen?
Yes, ma'am.
Excellent, thank you. Let me get it up here. Okay, so thank you so much for asking me to present tonight. As Mr. Phillips introduced me, I'm a principal of St. Joseph's School in Pinole. I've been principal for 10 years in the Diocese of Oakland. I have been principal for eight years at St. Paul's School. So we, we opened back in October when we were in the red. And unfortunately, we were opened for about three weeks and then we closed the week of Thanksgiving. We just opened again last week, meaning we were having kids on campus. So I'm going to share with you what we did to make this happen. So I need to tell you that communication is the key to all stakeholders, parents, students, my answer to my pastor and parish. But communication is the key and often. In order to open, we wanted to survey the parents and staff. So the parents wanted to see how many people were comfortable in bringing the kids back to school and then also how comfortable the staff was to, to go ahead and teach the kids while, while they were on campus as well as the kids that chose to stay at home. So I have to tell you, the first phase last October, we only got to bringing the kids back on campus once a week for social emotional learning. We didn't get to go past that because the numbers went up. It's also very important to be very clear with the details because you have to create the trust between all stakeholders, especially the parents and the staff and teachers. Answering questions before they're asked is really vital and creating a plan with the school staff involved because they're going to have to execute it. It is a lot of work. In the beginning of coming back on campus, it's really important to reflect that day and then that week and then adjust your plans in communication with any changes that you find important because it's one thing to write a plan, it's one thing to execute. It's another thing to execute the plan. So those things are very important. So we decided to move slowly in phases. We have three phases that we decided to execute when opening. We needed to do that slowly so we can, we could be careful, we could account, we could account for any things we needed to adjust and that has seemed to work out really well. So we created our plan with three phases, which I'll get to in a minute. We surveyed our community, like I said, and, and opened up the survey to ask any questions. So we did report back the percentages to of, of those people who wanted to come on campus and those people who wanted to continue to stay at home and learn and then also answer some of the questions that, that were, that were repeated most often by parents. One of them is that when we reopen this time in January, you know, parents wondered why, well, how come we could reopen and while we're in the purple when we couldn't reopen in October until we were two weeks in the red? So I had to kind of walk through that because I really didn't have the answer either. The rules seem to change as they seem to change often. After I had, after I got all that together, I had a presentation with the parents and then gave them a venue for questions and answers so everyone could hear kind of like this venue. I stated the guidelines to reopen and like I said, we reflected, we reflected each day for the first week. And then at the end of the week, I put together a PowerPoint with pictures of the kids, some things we had to change in our plan and I sent it out just this past Friday evening. So again, to be very transparent, to have that communication and information put forth where parents would feel comfortable. So some of the sample questions like I shared with you was, you know, how come we can reopen in the purple? What about the infections and the hospitalizations? Are we gonna, you know, are we gonna close again? If it's unsafe, how is that gonna happen? And then, of course, when teachers and staff are going to be vaccinated, are they mandated to test? And so the, the answer was yes, we're mandated to test. We are not mandated to test by the state, but our diocese wants us to test 25% every couple weeks, which is really once a month. And then a lot of us just got our first shot, which we were very, or vaccine, we were very happy about that. So we have had our preschool and TK classes opened all year and we had them open since August when we started school. So in order to do that, we had to reclassify our TK under our preschool license because our license is, you know, five years and younger or six years and younger. And so both classes have a maximum of 14 students in it with two adults because that's how we're allowed during COVID. And the students were taught how to walk in a line with proper spacing. They, you know, I'm sorry, you can't turn around and talk to your friend. They have to wear their mask. They were taught how you use the bathroom and wash their hands properly. And that took about a week for the little ones. And they're also sat at tables opposite one another. So this, so the students, even their two students at the same table, they are distanced. The tables are wiped down with disinfectant when they, when they get up all the time during the day. So if they're changing activities, when they, the kids get up, they have to go over and sanitize their hands before they move even to another portion of the room. And when they come back from that portion of the room, they have to sanitize their hands and sit back down and those tables are wiped off. When they're playing outside, they have to disinfect their hands on the way out and then upon returning, the bathrooms are cleaned twice a day in addition to the nightly cleaning, which it's sprayed with the electromagnetic machine as all of our classrooms and areas are to kind of give us that peace of mind. So our guiding principles to open school and in-person learning. You know, we, we surveyed our students. I have to tell you, the older students especially are very sad and depressed because that's the age that, you know, they need their, they need their people. And so, you know, we needed to get them back into the school. Again, doing this slowly so we can evaluate how to handle so many kids on campus has been a really, a really good thing. I'm glad that we've done that. We also are able to practice with the kids, you know, walking, being in the classroom and wearing, wearing masks properly on a smaller scale before adding kids. So ensuring flexibility, we have been very flexible in order to make this happen just with the staff and the teachers. And the parents have been very supportive, but it, even though we have, you know, received, you know, PBE from both the diocese and the state, it, it has taken a lot of planning and it's, and has cost money of the school in order to make sure that we open safely. Again, that constant and consistent communication, I put something out every Monday to all of the stakeholders and it was just the parents and the families, teachers and staff, of course. And then before we open or move into the next phase, I always have a presentation and training for the families. So our three phases, we want to make sure that we can provide equity for in-person learning as well as those who are choosing to be at home. And even though you try your best, it is difficult to be purely equitable. That's what we have found. But what we're doing is taking what we have done in distance learning and we're maintaining how, how the class is delivered or the, the education is delivered each day. We're maintaining how kids and families get information, how the kids turn in, you know, projects or papers, formative and summative assessments. So the little kids up through second grade use ClassDojo. So the teacher communicates their daily agenda, their weekly agenda, the links that they need. They set up all of their assignments where the kids or the, I guess, parents can help them take photos or, you know, turn in their work. Third grade through eighth grades are using Google Classroom, both as a communication tool for their assignments and collecting the assignments. So as we move, have we been moving to open to remain equitable, both the kids on campus and those who choose to stay at home will continue to use these models and these ways of communication. Let's see, again, you can choose to opt out of in-person learning, but you can't do it willy-nilly. So when, when you say you're going to, you know, we, we sent out a survey, are you interested? Yes, I'm interested. Then we send out a survey. We give the parents four days to decide, like, are you coming in? If you're coming in, you gotta come in, you gotta stay in for three weeks. So you can change your mind after three weeks, but you can't, you know, come in one day and not come in the other day or one week and not the other week. If there's an issue, a child's sick, then they have to email the teacher. So the teacher has, you know, enough time to prepare for the kids who are coming into school and of course, if we have room. So the learning expectations, like I said, are given in a weekly and then daily agenda. We have both synchronous, our, our live Zoom meetings are usually 8:30 to noon and then they have asynchronous the rest of the day as well as with their enrichment classes. And then the teachers stay on for office hours with the kids and then they have office hours with the, for the parents if they choose to ask questions themselves. In addition, Google Classroom, you can sign, the parents can sign up to be alerted when there is an assignment that is missing, an assignment that's turned in. So again, that's another layer of communication. We also have been able to secure a GoGuardian, which is a, which is a, how do I say this? It helps the kids stay on focus. It's put on, it's put on the Chromebooks that we have the kids used. It, it's verified by the email that the kids log in with, which is their school email. So we know if they're playing video games or if they're watching another YouTube that they're not supposed to be watching and the parents can also be alerted to help their kids stay on task while they're at school. In addition, in addition to the agenda that the teachers give out, there's also a list of learning standards that are going to be taught during the week with the resources that are, are needed that the parents can help with. So our phase one, which we started back in October and then just started up again, we, we took some days and some afternoons off so that the teachers and the staff can work together to prepare. So everything went smoothly, practiced, you know, what could go wrong kind of thing. So the first through eighth grade classes met in an outside classroom. That's what happened last week with physical education for a few hours. They, the teachers did both academically, but mostly social emotional interaction with their peers because some of these kids who chose not to come back in October really never even met their teacher live or a lot of their classmates. So it was kind of like the first day of school for them. And so, you know, we had to talk about the bathroom and all the rules to be safe on campus as well. Now, the students who weren't participating during this few hours received asynchronous assignments and then the teacher joined them after the kids left that were on campus. The kids that were on campus, they only brought a water bottle that was labeled with their name. We didn't add, we didn't have them eat snacks. So there wasn't an issue with touching garbage cans or doing all of that. This week, we're training them how to do, throw away their garbage, et cetera. And we, because the kids were outside, we had tents. So the tents are, I guess, carports and so they were able to, to be in a tent. It was kind of cozy, but it, it kept the kids from distractions. But we asked them to, to bring jackets to keep themselves warm. This time, however, we invited kindergarten just right into the classroom. So that's our phase two. And right now they're learning in the classroom two days a week when the rest of this, when the rest of the school comes back. In cohorts, March 15th, the kindergarteners will be able to come to school daily because we have enough room in the classroom for them. So right now, this is our schedule. This was decided in our vertical teams. And I know you, I came from a public school, so I know you know what vertical teams are. So the teachers got together and, you know, filled out paperwork, discussed what they needed to open safely for their classes. There's a few different rules depending on what vertical team they're in. So our vertical teams are TK through two, three through five, and six through eighth grades. So we decided that kindergarten started Wednesday and Thursday classes from 8:30 to noon. What we did on Friday was first, fourth, and fifth grade, they, they met at nine o'clock on campus if they chose to come on campus to 11 because those teachers wanted to get the kids started all together as a class online on Zoom and then the kids who wanted to come to school, they gave the parents about a half hour to get here. Second and third grade meet on Thursday and then middle school meets on, on Wednesdays and they're separated, the sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. We had a grace period of 15 minutes that they could drop off prior to the schedule. This time, what we, oh, maybe I won't, I'll keep, I'll keep going on my slides. So I wanted to give you an idea on some of the questions and answers from our vertical team. So I had a section, A, health and safety. You know, here's some of the categories, supplies, beginning of the school day, drop off, pickup, creating cohorts, et cetera. And then I also had, what else? Curriculum and instruction, facilities, oh, it's right here, and, and personal and financial resources. So the teachers worked together in their vertical teams to come up with things that they needed as teachers or staff that they thought their kids needed in those, in those grade levels and then who was going to do it and when it was going to be done by. So these are the expectations I had for the teachers and the staff. So we, we talked together. There, there were several teachers, especially in October, who didn't feel comfortable. I told them, I understand, I'm old and, you know, out of shape and, but, you know, we need to get the kids back on campus. And so it's kind of like bungee jumping. You just kind of have to do it off, off the bridge. Not that I would do that, but, you know, the first day after we had the kids on campus, the teachers were just so incredibly happy. So that, that was the catalyst to get the kids open, to get the kids back on campus this year. So the teacher, I gave them a toolbox of resources that I keep adding to, which is, you know, in a, in a Google folder. And, and the, we decided that the teachers will have their, will continue their planned meetings with the students each week and also the office hours for, for parents. As I explained before, how they were going to implement instruction and how they were going to collect assessments. Expectations of the students, again, routines about washing their hand, hands, how to arrive to school. We were, in, in order to make sure the kids were safe to come on campus, we gave away little pieces of paper, which became very cumbersome in October. What we did this year is my tech team created in Google Forms a check-in, a check-in survey. So it opens at midnight the night before, has to be done before 7:45 a.m. and parents can go ahead and answer those questions we all, you know, answer. Do you have a fever? Do you, does your child have a fever? Does your child, you know, have a cough, et cetera, and so on? And we asked them if they've had their, they've taken their temperature before they leave school. And what's great about that is that what we do is we print it off, you know, 15 minutes before the kids come in. And so it will indicate pass, they, they did it, missing, they didn't do it. And if they didn't answer all the questions correctly, which is no, there, it was a big alert and that, that has been very good as they drop off their kids. The kids can't get out of the car until that is verified. So that's been good. And then, like I said, student, just to add, the students are trained on the blended learning platforms that we already use and, and how they're gonna, they're gonna be trained about how to do project-based learning in the classroom while they're at school safely. So I believe you know all of these, I believe you know all of these safety procedures and protocols. So I went ahead and, and wrote a COVID-19 handbook addendum to our handbook. So everything's outlined to the parents in there about what they, sorry about the cat, what they need to, what they need to do, what they need their kids to do. We have contracted with a PMH laboratory and so they're, they're coming, they, they will be coming to our campus to be able to take tests for our staff and, and teachers. And then the next time we do it, which is March 8th, we will invite parents also to test, which makes us feel better. Of course, anyone with a fever, 100.4 or any other symptoms, they have to stay home. The same thing with a, with, you know, the same protocol with the staff. If they come in, they're showing symptoms, we, we have them take their temperature and write their temperature down in the office when they come to work. So we know right then and there that they don't have a fever and they can continue working. If they, if they don't feel well, then they're going to stay in my office in a pod until they go home. Same with the student. We're trying not to tolerate sneezing, runny eyes. We're just kind of saying, you know, no, we need, we need to send your child home to rest. Reporting is to say, and this is from the state of California. So of course, if there's, if there's any issues, we need to report it to the county. And of course, if there, if there is a diagnosis, they need to isolate for 10 days and then they can come back to school. We'd like the kids and the, and the staff, if that happens, to have a note from a medical doctor. I've been getting calls because kids can do their work wherever they are. So some have gone to Hawaii, Cancun, and I say, I'm sorry, they can't come back to school. They have to isolate for 10 days and have a negative test, not from Mexico, but after you get off the plane. Not from Mexico, but after you get off the plane. These are some of the things we put in. So no longer are we using our. Our water fountain, but we we have two water fill, water bottle fillers. Stations, one in the middle school, one in the elementary school. We've separated our. We've separated our benches. And so we can fit three people comfortably here far apart because these are large. And on all of the corners of the. On all the corners of the buildings, we have a, this is a foot pump. I don't know where my, here it is, a foot pump down here with hand sanitizer. We also have two hand sanitizers next to each door going outside of each classroom. So again, the kids, when they go out, they have to sanitize their hands. When they come back in, they have to sanitize their hands. Even if they've gone to the bathroom and washed their hands. Okay, so again, we have asked the teachers and and the assistants, because we do have assistants in our classrooms. Even on Zoom. But they are, they're kindly cleaning the commonly touched areas. At least once a day before the janitor comes around and does the hand sanitizer, does hand sanitizer. The electromagnetic machine. Everything that the kids touch, especially with the little kids, they're left out and they're sprayed with the solution. From the electromagnetic machine. The classroom doors, we're lucky to have three doors in a classroom, one that it opens up to the gym. And then the other two outside. So those two doors stay open along with the windows. So it is kind of cold. But we also have upgraded our air filters and having them serviced i- if not. Usual twice a year, four times a year. So we usually have two kids go to the bathroom together. And so right now, the little kids are walked to the bathroom and supervised. And but a non, a non-scheduled bathroom kid has to go to the bathroom. We, we have walkie-talkies, so we. Radio saying, hey, so-and-so in fourth grade is going to the bathroom. So second grade doesn't send a couple kids. So they're not sitting there chatting unsupervised. And so there's no more than two, two kids that can go in the bathroom. The bathrooms are cleaned and sanitized in the morning and the afternoons as well as the evenings now. So our phase two is our hybrid model. I'm sorry, this is so long. Our phase two is our hybrid model and we cannot fit all of our kids in the classroom. We have anywhere from thirty. To thirty-six kids in a class. So we can, we're dividing the kids into two cohorts. With eighteen kids or less, so a red group and a blue group. So we're getting, we're getting ready to go ahead and move into our phase two, which is an eight to twelve. We don't want them to have lunch initially because we need to be able to handle all the kids on campus. And then move into lunch. We'll move into keeping the kids until two to three o'clock. In our phase three, after Easter break, our Easter break will come back. I believe the ninth of April. So we'll open the fifteenth, ninth of April. So. So the, both kids will have synchronous and asynchronous learning. And again, that will be. Uniform with all of our teachers and delivered in the ways that they're used to. All of our enrichment classes will remain online, except for our PE class. The the kids will do PE outside with our PE teachers. So this is what our rooms look like. So we have the acrylic. We have the the acrylic on the teacher here, the teacher's and the assistant's desk. We've moved all the desks back in the classroom and so this might be group A. So group A, the kids in group A. Will always sit in these desks. And then, and they'll come to school for two days. Group B, they will always sit in these desks. But then they will have the the trans, translucent desk guards. The teachers will be using a widescreen video cam as they do now. So the kids at home can see what they're doing on the board as well as in the classroom. These are some of our teachers and this is what it looks like. They, they come to school every day and Zoom every day. They have two to three, they have two, two to three screens open. So they can see, you know, the kids on one screen. And then they can see what they're presenting on the other screen. And like I said, we have Go Guardian on. On all of the kids laptops. And the assistants are online watching the kids to make sure that they're on task. So our phase three will be the same as phase two, but we will go all day, five days, well, it won't be five days a week. Each group will be on campus two days a week and three days asynchronous because of the room we have in our classroom. I really, really, really keep saying it's, we really are counting on the parents to live low-risk. Lifestyles. And you know what that is. And so, and even with me asking. It doesn't always happen. So kids need to to quarantine. Sometimes parents don't tell me where their kids are going, but they're, if they're not there for a week, you know, we call them. And sometimes the kids are very happy to tell us where they, where they went. So. We also need to ask them to help us explain to kids, you know. They can't use, they can't touch anybody's backpack. They can't, you know, look at someone's phone or touch somebody's phone. Phone shouldn't be out anyway. They can't share food. They're not supposed to do that anyway. They can't touch anybody else's water bottles, et cetera. So we are also asking them to read and sign a letter. That talks about the safety and their responsibility for the wellness of others. I could not make them sign it, but the majority of my parents have. Again, constant and consistent communication is key. And thank you. That's it.
Thank you very much.
I'm sorry it was so long.
No, 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 that was great. We asked you to come here to help inform us about what you're doing. So we greatly appreciate it. We appreciate your time. We're now going to move to the section of the meeting where board members actually ask questions. Board, I know that we've gotten. A lot of questions in in the past, but we were doing that with only five board members and not five speakers. So what I'm going to ask you, so we can try to stay on on target on time and get through all the other speakers who are here today. Is if you could ask two really good questions of Ms. Lanza Kuna. And then I'm sure that if we need to send some follow-up questions to her, or our staff needs to do that, that she would be amenable to that. We're going to start, and she's shaking her head. So thank you so much. We are going to start tonight with Mr. Gonzalez Hoi.
Thank you, President Phillips, and good evening, Ms. Lanza Kuna. I hope I said your name correctly.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for being here. I'm trying to pick which of my two. I'll just pick. Let's see, do you have a classroom assistant in every classroom?
We are blessed, yes. Except for the middle school, we have two and a half, two and a half adults for the sixth, seventh and eighth grade. But we do have an assistant in every classroom, which. I, I'm lucky because they really help on Zoom. Kids don't slip through the cracks. And we can keep them on task because of Go Guardian. Hey, sit up, you're not in the camera. We have rules. You got to keep your camera on. You have to keep yourself on mute unless you're talking. And if that's, if that's waning, if that's not happening, then we email the parents. Because a lot of the times, as you probably suspect, that. You know, parents are either working at home or the kids are at home or they're with auntie or grandma. And. So they're, they're kind of on their own. At home, yeah.
Thank you for that. My second question is, what happens if a student does not follow your masking policy?
Well, we, we, we have a symbol for masking and we touch our nose because a lot of them, you know, it falls down over the nose. If if we've had to ask them more than three times, then we will, when the, when the parent picks them up. We'll say, hey, you know, Sam had a hard time with the mask today. You might want to get a better mask that covers his face properly. We will also give him just a paper, a paper mask, which we have. We've asked parents to bring their own masks because usually they're better fit to the kids. We also ask them to wash the mask. So if we see a dirty mask, we'll give them a paper mask and we'll. You know, talk to them right there when they pick them up. If it's grandma picking them up, we'll, we'll email the parent.
Thank you. That was my second one, President Phillips. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. We're going in reverse order tonight. So Mr. Christian, you will be next.
Thank you, President Phillips. Two questions I have. First one is, who are your key staff, the ones that taste the temperature? When the student comes on the campus? Who, who are the ones that engage the students?
Well, we have a signup sheet. So we have, I have a whole map that we created. That I give to the parents and then to the staff. We have four stations to let the kids in. So the first staff member is at the gate. We welcome them. How, how you doing? Good morning. Keep going straight. As the cars turn the corner, they, they meet me and another staff member. So one of, one of us looks at the sheet that we printed out because hopefully. Parents are doing what they're supposed to do and filling out that checklist on their phone. If, if they did not, then I put a post-it on the driver's side and I'll say, you need to go to the left line. So at the left line, then they have to stop. A staff member asks those questions that they should have, you know, followed and then take the kid's temperature. So if all is good, then we'll let them out. If, 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 if they did pass. And it says pass, then they'll go ahead and drop off their child to go ahead and join their class.
Okay. Thank you on that question. The second one, this would be like for the older students. Do you have any, like, dealing with the older students, do they have a difficult time keeping their mask on throughout the day?
You know, it's not their mask, it's just kind of getting close to one another. Actually, it's surprising that we have, we have to remind them more than we do the little TK and kindergartners. You know, elementary school kids are pretty good. But middle school, you know, they're really twenty-five, so they know better. So we have to kind of keep them, hey. Remember, oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. And they're not, they're not mad when we correct them. They just. You know, crave that, you know, they hug one another, no hugging, you know, get away. So I think it just, you know, their instinct is to, you know, because they miss their classmates. So it's, it's a little, it's a little more demanding with the middle school kids.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you very much, Mr. Christian. Mrs. Smith Foles.
Hi, good evening. So I guess my first question is, do you have sports or band or orchestra, drama? Do you have any of those things activated now on campus?
We do, but it's all virtual.
Okay, so all of those are virtual. Okay, and then.
Except for PE, sorry about that. So PE is, is outside and they're distanced.
Okay, and then how many CSOs or campus security officers do you have? Because you have your doors open. Who's making sure that you don't have a runner? You know, kindergarten has runners.
Right, right. Well, we have an assistant in the classroom. And we, like the beginning of school, you know, we set out the rules for a week or so and we have those expectations. We haven't had any runners, to be quite honest. Beginning of school. Yeah, I can, once in a while, preschool, we've had a couple runners, but you know, it's taken us a couple days to train them. And then security, you know, we, we have gates, so we're kind of in our own little silo. You know, so nobody's running off campus or on, and we have cameras. So if an adult, you know, we, adults have to check in at the front office. We have told people we can't accept visitors. So we, we try to be very vigilant. And if we see somebody coming on campus. You know, then we greet them outside of the building.
Thank you. Those are my two questions.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. We're going to go on to Mrs. Reckler.
Great, thank you. And thank you so much for being here. Really appreciate it. My first question is, you mentioned having a plan versus execution and, you know, there, there might be some differences between those two. Would you be able to summarize for us some of the big learnings that you discovered between the plan and execution?
Absolutely. Getting the kids on campus. Definitely had to meet right after the first day and say, okay, this could work better. Or we don't need people here, we need people here. This took too long. How can we change the path in which cars enter? So, but we were able to solve that really quickly. Having the kids go to the bathroom, you know, we thought, oh, well, they'll just follow like little ducklings and everything's okay. And, you know, they would turn, they would get close, they'd turn around and and try to talk to one another with their mask. And we're trying to keep the kids facing forward, looking at the back of the person in front of their head. So that had, that, that took more time. Than we anticipated. We've trained the kid, the kids actually to take a piece of paper to flush the toilet. Even though when they go into the bathroom, they have to hand sanitize. Then they hand, then they wash their hands for twenty seconds and we've taught, we taught them a song. You know, how to wash their hands for twenty seconds. And then when they walk back to the classroom, they have to hand sanitize again. So that, working that out also. Took a lot of ingenuity. The car, again, the cars, the parents not having what they needed to, to have to allow the kids to come in campus. The post-it on the car windshield and it's on the passenger car windshield. So the parent couldn't take it off by the time. They went to the other line. That was genius by a teacher and that really helped.
Thank you. So it's bathrooms and drop off. It's like operational.
Well, and one more thing, the, you know, again, I want to say that it's not, as much as we try. It is just not equitable to. Try to teach kids. In the classroom and online. So we've really perfected the online, right? So what we try to do is do both at the same time. And what I've had the teachers do is think of this, you're running a Zoom meeting like they're learning. You know, in their own home, but you have kids in the classroom. So that means. That you then, while you're giving your kids, you know, you're teaching your lesson online. And you give the kids, you know, five minutes to do a couple questions, you can then walk around. And see the kids in process, right, what they're doing. Because on Zoom, you really don't see what they're doing unless they're holding up a whiteboard. Or they're holding up their paper until the end product. So the beauty of being back in the classroom is that you can see the kids in process and you can. You know, either give them kudos or say, hey, you might want to think about this or correct them. And so, but the assistant can continue to monitor and help the kids online. So that's where that assistant is really, really important. And like I said, I'm really lucky to be able to have that at St. Joseph's because we're tuition-driven. So. If the, if, if the, if they didn't have the assistant, I, I think it would be really hard and not engaging. Because it would just be kids in a classroom and then, you know, the kids just seeing what's on the whiteboard. I mean, what's. You know, why, why do that then, right? So, so that was an adjustment. And we had to have discussions in vertical teams and together to figure out. How we can make both experiences a rich experience. And it took some practice.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, sorry. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Reckler. Mr. Duffy or Mr. Jordan, we have Mary Flannery in the audience. And she needs to be promoted to a panelist. We're going to move on to Mr. Leong. Do you have two questions, sir?
Oh, yeah. My only question is, um, from your experience, uh, what is the greatest challenge you, you're facing with the reopening of your school?
You know, I think the greatest challenge is the, um, the communication is fluid every day from the state and the county. So you make plans and then, oh, you can't make plans anymore. Um, that and, and really wanting to be able to deliver an equitable um, and safe education. I mean, that's on our shoulders every day and it's a lot to carry. And, um, because we, we, you know, are at St. Joseph in a Catholic school, it's, it's, it's a ministry really. So, um, the teachers and staff that I work with, they work all hours of the day to make sure that they reach the kids. And so it's, 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 it's quite a lot to hold. Um, but we're doing it and kids are happy and the teachers are happy. So I think those are the two things.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for representing.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Leong. Um, I have a couple of questions. My first question is, how have your preschoolers and TKers been doing since August?
You know, we have not had any, any cases at all. Um, we had, I'll be honest with you, we, we opened our preschool in TK this year, which was kind of almost ridiculous looking back at it, but we did during COVID. And, uh, we had a, a teacher in preschool exposed, so we closed the preschool for two weeks. And that was after we were open for three weeks. And so that was early September. Um, since then, we have had no, uh, no cases for kids and no cases with our staff or teachers. So we have been really lucky.
Thank you. And then my final question is, what have you been doing to get your staff to follow the safety protocols?
I buy them a lot of donuts. Um, that's not a lie. Um, y- you know, I don't have to, for my staff, I, I don't really have to get them to do that. They want to do that because they want to be safe and they want the kids back in the classroom. Um, I, I, I do have to tell you, I got my first shot on Friday and just to be able to get an appointment. Um, I didn't realize how ridiculously special that was and neither did my teachers. And that made a world of difference. I hate to say it, but it's true. But no, they are very careful. Um, they know they have to, you know, put the mask on. They have to clean their hands. Um, they have to clean, you know, their, the, the tops of their rooms, uh, tops of their room, tops of the tables and whatever they've used, but, um, I have not, I've not heard anything from them or from another teacher um, that they, they're put out by that. But a lot of donuts are good, too.
Love donuts.
Love donuts.
So that brings us to the top of the hour, almost. Uh, and we have all asked, uh, two questions or had the opportunity. Uh, un- unfortunately, uh, we're going to have to move on to the next, uh, presenter on this item, uh, just because of time. But I want to say to you, thank you very much for taking the time, uh, to put together that presentation for us, which we have and it's attached to the agenda now. So everyone can look at it who needs to, and then taking the time to sit and speak with us, uh, and share, uh, some lessons learned, uh, from St. Joe's. Uh, we greatly appreciate you and your time.
Thank you. I'm honored. And if you do have any other questions, feel free. If you want me to share my map or anything like that, I'm happy to do that as well. My handbook, um, just let me know.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I'm sure we're gonna follow up. Um, so that said, uh, we are going to, uh, move on to, uh, our next speaker. Uh, and I'm gonna have the screen sharing kind of go away because we're focused on this. There we go. I'm sorry. Thank you, though. Uh, we're gonna have our next speaker, our presenter on this item. And that is, uh, Mary Lou Flannery. Mary Lou Flannery is the principal, uh, of Silesians. Uh, and Ms. Flannery has also put together a presentation for us. So I know some people were wondering if we were gonna have any conversation about high schools. Here you go. Uh, Ms. Flannery needs somebody from staff to run her presentation for her, though. So Mr. Duffy or Mr. Jordan, if you could get that up on the screen, uh, then we'll turn it over, uh, to Principal Flannery. Thank you so much. Principal Flannery, it's all yours. Thank you for being with us.
Hi, good evening. Um, thanks for having me. Um, I've been at Silesian for over 25 years. Uh, first as a teacher for many years and then, uh, eventually assistant principal and principal the last, I guess, five years. Um, Silesian has been serving the Richmond community since 1960. I don't, I wanted to tell a little bit about our school since it's amazing to me how long we've been there, how many people say, Silesian, where? Wh- where are you? Right? And, um, so that's, I kind of wanted to tell a little bit about us, which may also kind of help um, sort of, um, put into context, you know, really our whole plan. Um, next slide. Um, we have about 400 students. We are a, uh, co-educational, um, you know, institution. Uh, we are owned and operated by the Silesians of St. John Bosco. That is a, a religious, um, order of priests and brothers. Um, we're located at 29th and Vale and we have a 21 acre campus adjacent to jail forward on one side. Richmond High's football field is right behind us and then, uh, the West Contra Costa Silesian Boys and Girls Club. Next slide. Um, our demographics, we are a very ethnically diverse school. We always have been. Um, numbers may switch from 22 or 31 or 19, but, but that's historically been, um, our school um, over all the years that I have been at Silesian and associated with it. Next slide. Um, we have students that come from many different schools, um, within the community. Um, biggest group come from Catholic feeder schools, but 29% come from charter schools. Um, 6% from private schools and 19 from public schools from West Contra Costa Unified Schools. And then, uh, where do our students come from? Um, our students come from primarily Richmond, uh, Hercules, San Pablo, El Sabrani, and then many other towns. Um, I say a, a good portion along the IAD corridor, but a lot have been coming along Highway Four recently as well, too. So, um, again, a, a group of students coming from, uh, primarily, um, the Richmond, um, you know, community area and certainly West Contra, uh, Costa Unified School District area. Um, our demographics too relative to religion. Sorry, you can't see the top part of that too well, but I think people say, oh, you know, it's a Catholic school, so everyone there is Catholic. That, that's not the case and hasn't really been for a long time. We have about 59% that self-identify as Catholic and then many other different, um, you know, religious affiliations. Uh, many Christian churches, um, some that, that don't identify any religious affiliation, some that are, um, Sikhs, agnostic, um, universalists, uh, and a variety of others. And that's really the mission of the Silesians and always has been, um, as they are um, trying to provide, um, a, uh, Catholic education for, uh, as many young people as wish to come to the school. And that also ties to something else. About 70% of our students, um, receive some kind of financial assistance. And, and I also, you know, want, uh, that information, um, to be out there as well, to kind of give a profile of the students that we serve uh, and that we have served for, for this many years. Next slide. Uh, when I talked with Mr. Phillips, I, I said, you know, we talked about timelines. So when did you start, you know, thinking about how you would try to get kids back into the classroom? And so I tried to put, um, many of the things that we did to give a sense of, of the, um, hours, um, that were involved in this plan as well as to try to, um, incorporate the various things that we sort of went through. The first document that I saw that I think gave me some hope, um, was a document put out by the Contra Costa Office of Education. And it was their reopening guidance document. And it was in June of 2020. And it said spacing between classroom desks, four to six feet. Everything that we had all heard relative to social distancing, uh, six feet, six feet. And I looked at classrooms and I looked at every, uh, part of our facility and I said, how am I going to space desks or chairs or tables, uh, and, and get kids back in school? I can't do it, right? Six feet isn't gonna work. For a high school, um, the other focus was on cohorts. Where you can just have, you know, teachers go from, you know, one cohort to another. Well, it's high school. Kids have electives, kids have all different schedule of courses and classes. How is that gonna work? In July, we ran a very small summer school, um, really, um, for students that needed some replacement credit in a few courses. And it was really a trial run for us. Um, we kind of ran it sort of like, um, you know, very small groups of students. Um, in that time period, we measured classrooms. We established a mac- maximum op- occupancy. Sorry, it's been a long day, per room. Uh, and we found that we could, for most of our classrooms, space desks or furniture five feet from another student. Uh, and that was taking a lot of furniture out of rooms. That was reconfiguring rooms. That was moving some furniture in one room into another, uh, and it took an inordinate amount of time. But at least we saw that we could do it, uh, and it was something that kind of motivated us to keep, uh, moving forward. Uh, we also then looked at our schedule of students and we knew that a lot of high schools, um, because of their size, were basically taking their entire, um, student population and dividing them alphabetically. All right, you know, A through M, you know, you're gonna come these two days, the rest of the alphabet, you come the other two days. And for us with a small school, we didn't really feel that that worked very well. Um, you know, what do we do with families that have a couple of kids in the school? They kind of need to come the same days. How are we gonna accommodate that? Um, and so we decided to divide the population of students into two groups, red and gold. And we also wanted to try to accommodate, if we could, um, students that, um, we call, uh, they're part of our academic success program. They're students that often have IEPs that, um, struggle, that, that need as much classroom time we felt as possible. And so we wanted to develop a schedule that also would accommodate them so that maybe they could be every week, you know, on campus. Um, so we worked on that in the summer. In August, we created a new remote school schedule. Obviously, in March, when the shelter order went into effect, we all had to, uh, create a schedule. We had kind of done some training and preparation for that, so we moved forward with that. But we learned, we learned what worked best with the students and the teachers. And so that was the genesis for a new remote schedule. Uh, and we also created a hybrid schedule, one where we could move from 100% remote to having students on cla- on campus a couple of days a week. At the same time, we created, um, a series of waivers and rules and regulations. This is all posted on our website. And rather than go through every detail of those, um, every student, every family had to sign a waiver that they have read, um, the rules or regulations. And then we can change those rules or regulations as we go through all of the changes that have come to us, sometimes weekly, sometimes every two weeks, whether it's from the county, whether it's from the state. And that the families are, um, agreeing to that they are looking at those rules or regulations as they change and that they are agreeing to follow those. And in the course of that, for example, um, we have all pre-screening so that you are agreeing that you are pre-screening prior to your student coming to school. You know, you're checking their temperature, you know, you're checking for various symptoms and you're agreeing that you're going to follow that and, and do that all the time. Um, I believe in August, we also did a few other things. Next slide. And that is, um, we did a, we started doing more PD on what we came to call high flex. That's really a term that you saw in colleges, right, where they have some people, you know, students remote and students in front of them. And so we tried to really focus on how, uh, can we help our teachers prepare for this kind of instruction, which is difficult, which is challenging, which was something new. And so we spent, um, a fair amount of time, uh, on PD for them. Um, we did bring in some of our ninth graders. We kept them in pods. Um, that was the popular word in the summer that then really shifted to cohorts, um, to kind of show them the school, help them see their teachers. Because for us, we thought, wow, here these kids are brand new to Silesian. They don't know us. We don't know them. They don't even know these teachers. And so we, we did all of that outside and we sort of had a pod move outside to another group. And there were teachers there that they were going to have in class and, um, so we kind of coordinated that. And then, um, the other thing that was sort of really, I think, transformational for me, UCSF began a series of what they called CARES webinars. And that was something that began to, um, enlighten me because they talked about, um, COVID-19 transmission in schools. And, uh, there are many pediatricians who were really motivated because they had their own kids. And you could tell they wanted their kids to go back to school, but it was the studies that they were doing within the Bay Area. And again, that resonated with me. I wasn't reading about, you know, um, you know, uh, Florida and I wasn't reading about New York and I wasn't reading about Illinois, but I was reading about San Francisco summer camps and how, um, kids fared. And they didn't have, um, super spreader events. They didn't have, uh, kids getting sick with COVID. And so those series of webinars were really, um, important. They were informational. They, as I said, were transformational. They began to give me hope that, wow, um, perhaps, um, we can bring kids back to school. Perhaps they're not gonna be spreading the virus. However, most of the data, I'll be honest with you, was on younger kids, right? Wasn't on high school kids. Who was doing anything with adolescents and high school kids? No one was. However, the more of these that I attended, there was more research, more studies. Um, they were expanding into students that were, um, back in school in Marin County. Yeah, Marin County is not Richmond. Um, and neither is San Francisco. However, um, they were Bay Area studies. And again, I was kind of seeing and hearing the same thing, um, that schools were not super spreaders. And it had to do with research that they were finally figuring out. Kids didn't have all of these particular ACE receptors that adults have. So they were less likely to get it. Adolescents, obviously, as they got older in high school, had more of those, but still the numbers were pretty low. Uh, and, um, I continued to attend those, uh, uh, any, um, that were, um, promoted by the County Office of Education, Contra Costa Health Services, California Department of Public Health. They had some of the same pediatricians who would speak at those webinars who were involved with UCSF. And again, they seemed to be very focused on continuing to research. How real was this? How likely was it that, um, kids were going to spread COVID-19 in the classroom? And again, could we bring them back to school and was it gonna be safe? And the more of those that I attended and the more that I listened and read about the science and saw the data that they had collected, um, I was convinced that we could do it if we put mitigation strategies into place. And if we were consistent with those mitigation strategies being in place, uh, and, um, actually sort of being enforced on a regular basis. Next slide. Um, in October, um, we began surveying our students and families. And of course, this was the time that, um, uh, we had gone into the red tier in Contra Costa County, so we were eligible to open, um, school. And again, we did more professional development for our teachers, especially focusing on teaching in a hybrid high flex environment. Um, and, um, we reopened on 10/20, two days a week. Um, we only had about 28 to 30% of our students that returned for on-campus instruction. Uh, however, um, we carried through and families that came and students that came were, were really happy to be there. More students, um, continued to come back, um, each week that it sort of went along. Uh, either feeling more comfortable or because their friends, you know, were on campus. Um, and we actually had, um, some seniors that were struggling academically. And I remember one young man said, I, I gotta get back in the classroom. I, I, I gotta be there. I, I need that help and I need that support. And, and he came back. Uh, we continued through, um, November 24th. We had made the decision, looking at the data, that we were concerned that Thanksgiving and Christmas, we were gonna see a surge. That's what everyone was predicting. And, and so we said, you know, let's close. We're close to final exams at the end of the semester. This is a smart thing for us to do and that is what we decided. And so we finished, um, the last couple of weeks of the semester remote. And again, you know, a, a chunk of that was about a week of, um, you know, uh, final assessments, um, for the end of the semester. And then, um, we, um, started the second semester remote. That again was our plan, you know, figuring, all right, all the numbers and surge, um, predictions were supposed to be two weeks, you know, after, um, uh, New Year's. And, uh, we wanted to come back, um, the end. And uh, we wanted to come back, um, the end of uh January, um, we surveyed families and um they were not um interested to return. They were very upset, scared, I should say is a better word. The case numbers in the county were astronomically high, um, we had the stay-at-home order still in place. And so, um, we waited and we surveyed again and we just returned last week on two eighteen. And we began our high flex um program again, um, students coming two days a week. Um, basically a combined group of students um that wanna be on campus. And um, we're gonna survey every two weeks and um hopefully there'll be more students and there are more students that are coming back um this week and kind of seems to be moving in that, you know, kind of order of things. So that's sort of our timeline, um, it's been way over seven months or so. Why reopen? A lot of people have asked us that. Um, for me personally, professionally, as an educator, um, class, in-class instruction is the best for um all students. Every study I have read, every study I continue to read from my own experience. There's so much um that goes on in the classroom that is is so important and essential. So I was very much driven by, you know, I gotta try to get these kids back in the classroom. Um, the science, um, the, the studies, the data collected, if the mitigation strategies are in place. And I began to use hands, face and space, which came from many other suggested reopening guidelines, easy to remember, wash your hands, mask, um, social distancing for space, um, student uh transmission in a school will be low, even for a high school. Um, our mission from our school, um, based by on, by the Silesians, um, is to educate the whole person. So it's imperative to bring kids back um for our co-curricular program on campus, which would be retreats or club activities, athletics or student activities and games. And so that's the other part of our educational program. The other factor that drove me very clearly and very frankly, high rates of anxiety, depression and stress of students. So many, um, the isolation was overwhelming for them. Sometimes their home life is not the best. And so, you know, I'm in touch all the time with our personal counselors and we um do an outreach all the time to our students. And and that was another sort of driving force for me. Um, you know, on our campus, we have a wellness center that we had just established, you know, before the, the shelter, barely got to use it because we were seeing um stress and anxiety that was um sort of on an all-time hot, on an all-time high before the pandemic, right? So for me, um, to provide in-class instruction, uh counselors there on site, um, a, a welcoming environment, that that would be such a, a key thing for so many of our students. Uh, and especially for adolescents, which is just such a difficult time period. And then you throw this thing into it and it's um pretty overwhelming. Um, challenges, okay? So here's why I wanna do it, here's all the stuff we started to do and planned and and learned about and thought about. We have an older building, you saw the picture on the front, it was built in nineteen fifty-nine. I don't have an HVAC system, everything you read, you know, you've gotta have better ventilation system, you've gotta have uh new filters. Um, we don't have that, we have single pane windows um that you open and shut by turning a handle, they often blow shut. We know that the wind that comes through Richmond uh in the evenings and um, how do I keep all the windows open? Um, how do I keep teachers safe? Uh, many teachers were afraid, scared, worried, how do I keep students safe? How can we socially distance every classroom and fit half of our student body? And as I said, we started working on that in the summer to see if we could do that. And um, you know, uh, what was possible. Well, teachers wanna come back, um, will I get medical waiver requests from staff? Didn't know that, right? Um, we was hoping that I wouldn't have many, but that was a real possibility. And how do I handle testing and contact tracing for the entire school community? Kind of an awesome sort of um challenge. Um, in terms of, uh, the next slide, I think I talk about solutions. Um, we um thought out of the box, right? We spread our students out to additional facilities on campus. We um, we don't operate the Boys and Girls Club behind us, but we work with them. So they were gracious enough to say, hey, you guys can come over and use a couple of classrooms. So we spread some of our classes out there. Um, they also have a gym if we needed that extra space. Um, we um were planning to use our cafe or library as classrooms, we have not yet, but that we have that possibility that that in, in place. Um, we have a forty by forty tent, we have a lot of space on campus. And so, alright, let's try to do some things outdoors if we can. Um, we invested in medical grade H thirteen HEPA air purifiers for every classroom, hallways, gym and cafe. Some were financed by the CARES Act funding, uh, we also wrote a grant. Um, and those things um are running every day in the background and they're pretty amazing. And as I said, we did a lot of research, a particular brand that we found that was not um, had very high ratings and was not extremely expensive, but really highly rated. Um, and so we put those um in the building. And then uh set out moving furniture everywhere and anywhere, um, again, to maximize social distancing, reconfiguring classrooms, some teachers that may have always been in one room were now moved to another because that would better accommodate their students and their particular program. And then we have a certified medical assistant on staff to assist with contact tracing. So that sort of made that doable. In the six weeks that we were open, um, we had three positive COVID cases. One was a false positive, which turned out, yes, I said, to be a false positive. One was a student and one was a teacher. The student and the teacher did not um get COVID on campus, both of those, um, per the health department, um, were um deemed to um have been cases that were contact contracted outside of school. And we had no outbreak or other students or faculty or staff that got sick uh from those two cases. Uh, next um slide. More solutions, uh, we establish our reopening plan, it is on our website. Um, we created the Cal OSHA Workplace Safety Plan, that's also on our website. Uh, we purchased plastic sneeze guards for teacher desks, front office counters. Uh, for the window problem, which is a little unique to us with these old windows. Uh, we installed foam spacers to keep windows open so they can't blow all the way shut. Um, and then, uh, as I said, we utilized CARES Act funding um to purchase additional laptops, software licenses for distance learning, uh, some additional PPE supplies. And then we continued to schedule PD for faculty on high flex teaching. Um, that was a, a really important um component of our plan because um not only, you know, were we uh helping teachers with um remote school, but also, um, you know, how to teach in a hybrid fashion. And I think that's it.
Thank you very much uh for the presentation. Uh, we greatly appreciate it. This one has moved on a little faster, so board, we may be able to ask a, a couple more questions this time around. Uh, but we are starting again with Mr. Gonzalez Hoy, so if you can do two, um, and then if we're able to do a second round, we will, okay?
Thank you, uh, good evening, Ms. Flannery, thank you for being here. Um, my first question is, how, uh, if you could clarify, how many students do you have per cohort?
It's not a cohort, so we divided them into two groups. And then we found that when we went to have students come back, we didn't have enough of one group or the other group. We had it, we ended up with a combined group of students who wanted to be on campus. And so then we made the new group, which we now call the school group. Um, and that's kind of a combo of what we originally started with. And we actually are looking at, well, what are we going to do going forward? We'd like to expand from two days to four days. So we don't know if we have to reconfigure our groups again or if we're just gonna continue to expand, you know, our school group, which is the group that wants to be on campus for in-class instruction.
Um, so to clarify, how many per group do you have then? How many students per group?
We designed it that there would be probably about a hundred and eighty students total in the, on the school campus um at one time, maximum, and we have not seen that yet. Um, in high school, we have a little bit of a unique phenomena, seniors, for example. Um, in polling them and in surveying them are saying to us, well, I see all my friends outside, so I don't really, you know, I have to get up early, I gotta get dressed, I'm just gonna hang out with the remote because it's just easier. And that's what we're actually hearing from the older kids. The biggest group that wants to be on campus every day, if possible, is freshmen. So we're, we're dealing with a very different sort of dynamics with, in the high school world.
Thank you very much, uh, President Phillips, that was like two questions in one, so.
I, I kinda got what happened, you asked kind of the wrong question, so that was one question, why don't you could go ahead and ask your second question?
Great, thank you. Uh, Ms. Flannery, how many, uh, I mean, how are you serving special education students in your uh model?
Um, those students are allowed, we originally designed it, students would come every other week. And then we found that these students wanted to come and we wanted those students to be able to come every single week, two days a week. So they are able to come every week, two days a week.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez Hoy, uh, Mr. Christian, two?
Yes, I thank you, uh, President Phillips. Um, first question would be, um, and this is centered around sports, around the sports area. Um, how do you, um, how, you know, how do you keep the students from sharing the uh water or food or? How do you keep the students from, you know, engaging in, in those areas?
The, per our rules and we have, um, we've been doing conditioning, right? Which has been allowed um on campus since June, right? So we have separate rules and regulations for athletes, athletes that are involved with conditioning. We're writing new ones now as sports are being allowed, we have the purple tier sports. And then as of last Friday, we are going to see some other sports. And so we will continue to update those rules or regulations for athletes, right? Um, so if they allow equipment to be shared, um, then it can be shared for a while, you could not share equipment at all. Um, you can't have students, say, in a weight room at all right now, um, or in the gym. And so, you know, we, we're gonna follow those, you know, as they come down uh from the state. Um, in terms of, um, when we're doing PE class on campus right now, um, the PE teacher is selecting uh what unit they're involved with to minimize the use of sharing any equipment. So they were just doing a, a badminton lesson, right? And they have, you know, they can substitute in, you know, plenty of different, you know, shuttle clocks or they can, they were doing tennis outside and they can move in different tennis balls and then leave others aside. And then we have one of the, the same thing that Natalie talked about, one of the um electrostatic sprayers where we can, you know, spray stuff. But that's how we've really handled that. Um, for basketball players, if they're doing a condit- they're doing a, um, they have a, a, a class, they'll use their own personal basketball if they're shooting in the gym uh during that class because they can't be in the gym for conditioning or practice. But if they're in this class, they will only use their basketball and not share that basketball with anyone because they're just doing their own individual shooting. Okay. Kinda answer it, and then.
Yeah.
We're all gonna figure out what we're going to do with all of the sports now that may be played. And we have a T-CAL meeting Wednesday to see if we can possibly sort out how that's all gonna work. And we frankly, none of us have a clue how that's all gonna work.
Okay, thank you on that first question, the second will be, um, um, as far as, you know, you know, you know, dealing with the older kids, um, are the students wearing a mask? Or are they following through with the procedure throughout the day or?
They're really good with the mask wearing. As I said, my number one concern when they walked on campus uh was um that they had a mask on and that they wore it properly. And so when we first brought them back, we did a, a video, um, you know, kind of orientation. We posted it on social media so they would see it and they would watch it. Wearing masks has been really easy for them, they've been consistent. Very few times, um, have I had to mention to a student, hey, your mask, you need to pull it up, you know? And we have extra masks, like similar to Natalie, and we'll give a student a mask if it falls apart or if it, you know, breaks or whatever. Um, the hardest thing with teenage kids, social distancing. They wanna, they clump, they hang together, they um are with each other, um, and and that's the hardest thing. So we constantly remind them, one other principal in a, a high school said to me, it's like reminder fatigue. But, you know, they're, they, they know it and um we just did another orientation with them in small groups on Friday when they came back. And we explained again about why social distancing is so important. We have um any of our outside seating, we have um stickers, you know, don't sit here, don't sit there as reminders. Um, the problem with that is, is that students were sitting on the stickers. And so now, now he said, I need to see the stickers and not you on it. So we've had to kind of adjust with that, but that is by far the hardest thing because they want to hug each other, they wanna hang with each other, you know, and and keeping them apart is very difficult outside of the classroom, right? And so what we do in the hallways, we stagger dismissals, we stagger when classes start. Uh, we have them coming into three different doors in the building, so they're not coming in all at the one time. We stopped all of the bells throughout the school so that kids aren't running to class, you know, and piling all in the room together or running out of class or running somewhere else. And that has um eliminated some of the kind of close contact in the hallways and stairwells and and kind of, you know, hanging around each other. And the other thing we did, we did this in the summer, we had lockers everywhere throughout the school, we took them all out, gone. Kids weren't using them and it gave us more space.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Christian, for those questions, Mrs. Smith holds.
Um, so my first question is, how do your students get to school? What's your transportation breakdown?
Um, some come private car, um, we have, we have some um vans that pick up a few students and bring them and take them um from, you know, various drop-off points. Um, we have some students to take the bus, we have some students to take um bar.
Okay, and then my next question is, your student-to-teacher ratio and your student-to-counselor ratio?
Um, we have um three counselors on staff, um, so four hundred, you know, students divided by three. And then I think our teacher uh ratio, um, I think it's around um one to fifteen, something like that. Because we have some smaller elective classes that kind of bring that number down somewhat.
Thank you, those are my two questions.
Thank you very much, ma'am, um, Mrs. Reckler.
Thank you and thank you for being here, Ms. Flannery.
Sure.
Uh, my first question is, so far to date, what are your biggest learnings that you were, that you would offer back to us?
Um, we can, we can bring kids back to school as long as the mitigation strategies are in place and that you follow them and you enforce them. Um, and once the kids learn them, and this again is also what I picked up from all of these webinars, especially the UCSF ones, that um the reason and the um CDPH said the same thing, the reason that they allowed schools to open again, even if we were in purple, is that once you've opened, you know basically how to do it. You, you know, and the kids know what they're supposed to do. They know they have to wear a mask, they know they have to social distance. They know that, you know, um, they should be, you know, washing their hands or we have hand sanitizer everywhere and the whole thing. And so, a- and the teachers also know that. And so putting all those into place, that they, um, the Department of Public Health basically feels that it is a safer place than in many other, you know, areas or places where you don't have those mitigation strategies all in place at the same time. And it becomes routine. And I think back to the first uh day of school when we opened in October and I, and I compared it to when we opened last week. And um it was so much easier reopening because I realized that what they had said actually was in fact the case. We knew what to do, the kids knew what to do because we had most of the same kids coming back. And then the few kids that were new, we were able to work with them, orient them. And other students were like, hey, hey, come over here, hey, you, you can't, you know, you, you, you gotta spread out, don't sit on that, that spot, that sticker. You're supposed to leave the sticker where you don't sit on it. And so they were kind of helping each other.
Thank you, and the second question is, how did you, as a staff, work through all of that? If you might describe that process a bit and um, you know, any, any major learnings from that?
Major learning, professional development was key. Professional development, when we all were told, you know, you, you have to stay at home in March. We had luckily, uh, we use Schoology as a, a, a learning management system. And so we had a, a platform ready, we had actually done some prep on that, kind of looking at what was going on, worrying, thinking this is, doesn't look good, things might happen. And so we were able to go remote and it worked and we were able to make that um transition. But professional development was key and we continued to do professional development to assist the teachers. We also knew that if we wanted to do this, um, you know, high flex type of teaching, we had to do more professional development because that was new for everybody. And no one had done that and no one was an expert on that. And so that was a key element. Um, the other element, quite frankly, I mean, it, it was tough. There were a lot of faculty that were scared, that were not on board, that were not happy, tried to work with them. You know, what are your concerns? What can I do, you know, to help with that? Um, and um, you know, we, we had to work through that. But I, I do believe, um, and, and the other thing that we also focused was, um, how, how can you add a social emotional learning component to your lesson plans? Because these kids need that, there's so much stress and anxiety out there. to your lesson plans? Because these kids need that. There's so much stress and anxiety out there. You can't ignore that when you're teaching remotely or when you're teaching high flex. You need to incorporate that. We've also been adding some of that PD, you know, for our teachers as well to keep them sort of focused on that, because that is such a real concern, especially for teenage kids.
If I may just redirect a bit, I'm more aiming the question toward developing your plan to come back and having your staff come back, like more, you know, kind of those types of learnings, a little bit more than like the high flex. Like, how did, how did you, how did you guys all make the plan and agree on the plan and buy in on the plan and adjust the plan, like those kinds of?
I mean, we, we did surveys. We had kind of a team of people that were sort of working on that, a team of people that were working on, you know, social distancing furniture in a classroom, working on the schedule. How are we going to divide this group of kids up? It wasn't just me, but a group of people, some that volunteered that wanted to work on that, that felt they could really help develop a schedule that would accommodate the students and that would work for us, having a small school. And so kind of a couple of different groups of people worked on different parts of that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Reckler. Now, we're going to go on to Mr. Leung.
Good evening, and thank you for being here, Ms. Flannery. I think another question that I have is, like, from, like, from your experience, like, what unique, like, challenges have you faced with the reopening?
I think, I think just dealing with, you know, the reality of teachers and staff and students, some of which were very, very scared. And I think it has to do, too, with the particular community that we live in. You know, San Pablo, in terms of the case rates, has been extremely high. And so it has, the whole, you know, COVID crisis has hit home so personally and so intimately for so many families and for so many kids. And so I think that is a factor that, you know, I couldn't lose sight of and that I had to be aware of and I had to keep in mind. And that, try to, you know, talk with people, what kind of support do you need? How can we help you? And we did a lot of surveys, you know, and at different times. We surveyed faculty, you know, after they were on campus, after each day, how do you feel? What are some things that you need? What are some things that would assist you? I can't tell you that we were able to meet every single one of those, but we wanted to hear what their concerns were, and we tried as best as we could to accommodate some of their concerns, because the fear was real, and it was based on their own personal experiences that they were going through.
Thank you for that. That was my final question.
Okay, thank you very much. I have two questions. One, can you please expand on the negative effects that you feel the closures have had on teens?
I mean, as I said, we know some of our students, you know, their home life is not great. So, you know, I know firsthand that I had, we had a couple 5150s, the first shelter time period that, you know, came to us, counselor contacted, we contacted families. We had one other in the fall. And so that's always on my mind, and I'm always concerned about that. And so I think that is something that, I mean, we've seen. And we just did a survey the other day again. In fact, just looking at results before this meeting, and, you know, students listed stress still is very high, anxiety, depression. We asked them, do you know other students that you've been worried about? And I think it was like 52% said yes. They knew students that they were worried about and concerned about. So that is a real phenomenon that we're dealing with. And that is related to the closures and kids not seeing their friends and being isolated.
Thank you very much. And then my second question is, what did you do or what have you been doing to get staff to follow your safety protocols?
I mean, we basically did orientations. We did an orientation on campus, you know, explaining, you know, how we would do contact tracing if a case, you know, was reported. We showed them, you know, how we were doing the cleaning and disinfecting with this electrostatic sprayer, so they understood what we were doing. We showed them how we had, you know, mapped out the campus and the spaces that we had set aside, trying to encourage, if you wish to teach a class outside, we updated our Wi-Fi outside, because we have a lot of grass area, and we said, hey, you guys could use this. Wi-Fi has been updated so that you're able to teach out there if you want to. So we did some of those things and, you know, made some, you know, videos, teaching people, you know, this is what you need to do and how you should do it. And so kind of a combination of those things.
Thank you very much. Board, we do have a little time, and so we're going to do another round of questions. If you have them, that's great. If you don't, it's okay. No pressure. But Mr. Gonzalez Hoi, we're going to start with you. And I'm going to let you ask two more questions, okay?
Thank you, President Phillips. I don't have any further questions.
Okay. And Mr. Christian?
No questions.
Okay. Mrs. Smith folds.
No question.
Okay. And Mrs. Reckler?
I do thank you. If you would address increased costs in terms of facilities and anything else that you've incurred and how you break that down, if you do it on a per-student basis, or if you could give us some idea?
I mean, I know I could just say to you, like, the grant we wrote, you know, for the, we didn't, we didn't set it up per-student cost, right? We sort of, we're making lists of what's the stuff that we need, what is the stuff that we have to get, and then what can we get via some grants, right, to help pay for this, right? And again, because we didn't, we hadn't seen access or we hadn't gotten access to the CARES Act, you know, funding and what, how much we would have allotted through that. So I know that those air purifiers that we purchased for the school, which was a huge single purchase, that was probably around $48,000, $50,000, just for those. And I mean, that's probably the biggest thing, I think, that we purchased. I mean, if I, you know, you could say, you know, the plastic guards and multiply those by 30 or so, but those air purifiers were probably the biggest things. And then, you know, the other thing, like, the CARES Act funding did really help us. I think we ended up with, I think we, I think we're eligible for $59,000 or something like that, and that helped with some additional laptops. A problem we ran into, for example, is teaching computer science. You're not going to teach computer science classes or AP computer science with Chromebooks, right? So they need laptops. Well, if kids didn't have a laptop, that's a problem. We had been a one-to-one iPad school, but we're kind of slowly morphing to laptops. Well, we had kids that did not have a laptop, and how are we going to teach that class? So that was something that CARES Act funding helped us with. And, you know, so we accessed some of that finally.
Okay, thank you. And ongoing expenses for masks or sanitizer, any?
Yeah, I mean, I wouldn't say, I mean, you know, we've, again, we've gotten some more stuff from the CARES Act stuff. We got, there was some other, another program from the state. So I feel like we have masks coming out of our ears, and we have lots of, you know, hand sanitizer, which is great. I think in the very beginning, you know, everyone wanted wipes, because we all thought cleaning surfaces was the way to go. And now we've found that's not such a big thing. But I think some of those other purchases, like clearly, like laptops, I mean, that, that's just huge, right? Or some kind of a device, depending on the grade level and depending on the course, that the kids need, if you're either doing hybrid or you're doing all remote, that those things are essential and obviously high cost.
Okay, so outside of equipment for students, it's been the HEPA filters and ongoing expenses related to masks and sanitizer, which is not overwhelming burden?
Right.
Correct. Anything on professional development or fees?
I mean, we got quite, we got quite a bit of that funded, say, through Title II. We used a lot of in-house resources. We have some super talented people, and some of them wanted to, you know, put on some professional development workshops. And you'd be surprised how many great workshops you can put together from really good teachers who want to share their expertise.
Okay, thank you, for sure.
Yeah.
Mrs. Reckler, so we did have some more time, which is what I was saying earlier. And we just kind of, three different trustees said they didn't have any questions. So if you want to take some more time to finish off your list, I'm going to give you their time since they passed.
I am okay for now. Thank you.
Okay. So Mr. Leung, do you have any additional questions?
No questions.
Okay, thank you very much. Principal Flannery, how did you overcome the fear that is connected to reopening? And let me back up a little bit. How close, what city are you in?
At the school? The school is, is, is in Richmond by the address, but actually our football field, and that half of the campus is San Pablo.
So part of your school is in San Pablo, and part of your school is in Richmond?
Right, but our address is Richmond.
And your school is behind Richmond High School, correct?
Yeah, or they're behind us, depending on how you look at it. We're right smack next to J.O. Ford. So we're on Vail, so we're right down from the casino parking lot now. Used to be right down from the old doctor's hospital.
And the area that you're in is a hotspot for the county. So how did you get past the fear that people have associated with running a school in that area?
I mean, I think, you know, we, we use social media, as I said, when we started, you know, orienting the kids, hey, we're going to open up, here's what we need you to do, this will keep you safe if you're wearing a mask, if you're social distancing, if you're washing your hands. And I think that was, was part of our, you know, strategy, sending communications home to the families. Here's what our plan is. And we put that on our website pretty early before we identified it. You know, now the state has this identifying it as the, you know, COVID safety plan. But we had our reopening plan on there for a long time, and so we referred to that with our families. And first, you know, I think had to, you know, prove to them that we had a sound plan, that we had mitigation strategies in place that we could enforce and would enforce. And then that they had to agree to follow rules and regulations, and every family had to sign a waiver indicating that they had read those and that they were willing to follow those. And there was no exception to that.
Thank you very much. And when you say there was no exception to that, do you have, what do you do if there's a child that doesn't listen? If there's a child that refuses to mask, what do you guys do?
I mean, my, my policy, as I said from the beginning, and I never had to do this yet, was I said, I'm going to tell a student once, explain why I need them to wear the mask properly. You know, to me, with dealing with adolescents, I'm always going to say, look, this is why you need to wear this mask properly, right? I'm not picking on you, I'm not singling you out, but it's for your safety. It's for the safety of every other kid here and every other faculty and staff member. And I said, if I had to tell them, you know, more than twice, then I was going to call home and tell the parent, pick up your son or daughter, okay? And you need to speak with them about how important this is that they wear that mask properly.
And not that you have this, but if you were to have staff members who refused to comply with the safety protocols, what would you do?
I would tell them to be, to stay home. And I can't have you here at work if you're not going to wear a mask and if you're not going to follow social distancing and, you know, the, the basic protocol, right? And they also had to sign a waiver too, a return-to-work waiver as well. And saying that they had read the rules or regulations and that they were willing to follow all of those.
Okay. I want to just say thank you very, well, I'm sorry, I did not miss, Mr. Leung, did I hit, did I come back to you before?
Yes, you did. I don't have any further questions.
Okay. I've done that in the past, and I didn't want to miss you. But Principal Flannery, I just want to say thank you very much for coming and speaking with us on this evening. This was very informative, and you were a great help. So with that said, I am going to ask the board if we can take a 10-minute recess. I have 7:50, well, we come back a little after 8:00. I have 7:51 now. But can I have a 10-minute recess until 8:02? Can I have a motion for that?
All right, took my break, but so moved, Mr. Phillips. I'll take another one. So moved.
Can I have a second for this recess?
Second.
Thank you. So it's been properly moved and seconded, and we're going to break until 8:02, our recess. Mr. Gonzalez Hoi?
Yes.
Christian?
Yes.
Smith folds.
Yep.
Reckler?
Reckler, yes.
Leung?
Leung, yes.
Phillips, yes. Thank you so much. Again, Principal Flannery, we really appreciate you. We are recessed until 8:02.
You're welcome. Bye-bye.
Bye-bye. Bye-bye. Okay, we have everyone back. Thank you very much. Uh, it is now uh eight oh two. Um, I need to get two people promoted. I need to get the county supervisor, uh, John Joya, uh, promoted uh to panelist. And I also need to get the deputy uh health officer, Ori Sevili, uh, promoted to a panelist as well. Um, they are going to uh give us an update on the recent uh announcement from the county uh that uh school employees are able to uh make appointments for the vaccine. So I reckon I have both of them uh promoted to panelists. That would be fantastic.
Other than Phillips, they both should be uh panelists then?
Okay, so um, I well, I just said who they are. So we have our county supervisor who uh has been uh very helpful to us in this process. And we have Dr. Ori Sevili, who is the deputy health officer. Um, and he is actually in charge of the vaccine program uh for uh our county. Um, and I am going to let uh them kind of take it away. We're going to start with, I think, Supervisor Joya, uh, who will uh then bring in the uh deputy health officer.
Great. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Phillips. And I want to first start by acknowledging and appreciating um all of your thoughtful study sessions. Um, and I know that Dr. Farnatano and I were on one of your previous ones. And and really acknowledge that the board is spending time to get informed about these really complicated issues. And and I want to express appreciation on the leadership of your board, uh, president, Mr. Phillips, uh, for really taking on this issue to bring it before your board. Thank you. And also, I want all of you to know, there have been discussions between um uh between the county, between our health officer, myself, your superintendent, your board president, Mr. Phillips. Um, and I know um, uh, Jamila was also uh involved in in a discussion recently. So that um, in no uncertain terms, I want to say this. Contra Costa County uh and our Health Services Department is committed to working with the West Contra Costa School District um to get educators vaccinated uh in a timely way and consistent with the state guidelines, because we are all subject to the state guidelines, subject also to the allocations we receive, um, so that schools can reopen safely as soon as possible. And let me offer my own personal view as uh someone who represents most of the West Contra Costa Unified School District for the last twenty-two years on the Board of Supervisors. I have heard, I have looked at a lot of data, I've heard from families and parents, I've heard from educators. I think um we are all better off as a community, our kids, um, our families. The sooner we can move forward reopening schools safely, and I think that path is available. Um, from a social, emotional learning standpoint, a health standpoint, I believe we can all be committed to doing this together. Um, and so and I and I know um, Mr. Phillips has had many conversations with our health department to look to really determine how we can partner with you to make that happen. Um, as of now, um, about two hundred and seventy thousand doses of the vaccine have been provided in Contra Costa County. About a hundred and ninety-four thousand of those doses are first doses, so it's about a hundred and ninety-four thousand people. Around twenty-one percent of those over sixteen in Contra Costa have been vaccinated, or their first dose. However, I'm concerned. There are equity issues. Those numbers vary by city. Uh, so as I said, the average is twenty-one percent countywide, just to give you a perspective in our district. Uh, twenty-eight percent of those who live in El Sabrante above sixteen have been vaccinated. In El Cerrito, it's about twenty-three percent. In Hercules, it's about twenty-one percent. In Pinole, it's about nineteen percent. In San Pablo, it's about eighteen percent. In Richmond, it is only about thirteen percent. The county has established three high-volume vaccination centers in West County, at the Richmond Auditorium, um, at the um counties, uh, West County Health Center in San Pablo and at Contra Costa College. However, we have found that there are obstacles for people to get uh to a vaccination. So several weeks ago, we started a mobile vaccination program, and we started it in North Richmond. Uh, we've identified seventy-three low-income senior housing developments across the county and have uh been partnering with community partners, our health department and community partners, to go out and to vaccinate uh seniors at those facilities. And we started with a project, housing project in North Richmond where sixty-one seniors were vaccinated. I was at at our site at a housing authority site in San Pablo last week. Um, we are working with community providers, community organizations to identify other sites for community uh centers to vaccinate. And I know this Sat- this Saturday, there's a, the county is working with uh John Muir for um uh identifying and vaccinating vulnerable, hard-to-reach seniors um at a site. Uh, I think it's Richmond High and uh another site in San Pablo. Appreciate the partnership with the school district. Um, I know I was talking to one of my staff in my office today, who was actually calling seniors and talking to them. There's been a lot of outreach um to get folks to these sites. We have a ways to go to close that disparity gap, um, and I'm going to keep an eye on it to make sure we we do. Um, and um, we're looking forward to partnering with the school district uh to uh to move forward as quickly as possible. Again, I think you have to also recognize, we are subject to the the doses that we receive from the state. The state is changing their system on March fifteenth, and they've uh, they have contracted with a third-party administrator, Blue Shield, to uh run their uh vaccination distribution program, working with others like Kaiser. And you'll hear more details uh here um from doctors, Dr. Sevili, who runs, is really running our vaccination outreach program. There's a lot of uncertainties with some changes at the state. Um, but uh one thing to note, of the fifty-eight counties in California, only about four fourteen or fifteen of them run county hospitals and clinics. We are one of them. That means we have had our own infrastructure to actually deliver uh doses into people's arms. Our nurses, our physicians, our professional staff, most counties don't have that. So with the change switching, with the state switching, it's um, it's it's um methodology and and setting up a new app called My Turn, we are, we are keep, we are concerned about what that means, um, given the infrastructure that we've established, but we are working with the state so that this is um as smooth a transition as possible. So with that, uh, I will turn it over to um Dr. Ori Sevili, our deputy health officer, uh, and um in charge of our vaccination program. And I know he just comes off of, he spent the evening uh presenting to the Alameda Contra Costa Medical Association. I'm sure lots of discussion and questions there, so um, Dr. Sevili.
Hi, everyone, and thank you for the invitation. Um, uh, Dr. Farnatano um is away this week, so I'm covering health officer duties as well. And um, yeah, I think that, I don't know where you want me to start. I'll I'll just say this, big picture. We have a lot of vaccination capacity in Contra Costa County. We can probably deliver between the county and its partners about seventy thousand doses a week. And that's not including Kaiser. And um, what we get from the state is about twenty-five thousand doses a week. So we can, we have the capacity to get vaccine into arms as far as nurses, as far as sites, syringes, all of that stuff is ready to go. We just need vaccine. So that's the biggest obstacle right now, and vaccine is a hot commodity. There's not enough of it to go around. We have vaccinated over eighty percent of our elders who are over the age of seventy-five, and over half of the people over the age of sixty-five already. So you probably saw the announcement on Friday is that we opened up to our essential workers. Uh, the healthcare workers were fire phase one A, but now in phase one B, we've added uh food and agriculture, emergency service workers, and educators in childcare. And uh, the governor said to us, uh, prioritize based on people who have contact with the public. You know, so uh, for for people who work in schools, for childcare and educators, it's really the people who who either are already open and seeing kids in person or have plans to imminently open, because we don't want to only give it to people who are are already open. We want to, I I think the governor uh is really trying to incentivize in-person instruction to return. I think there's um, you know, a variety of people uh feeling like it can be done safely. I think we have more and more studies that have come out that it can be done safely in person, and that's really who they want us to prioritize in um, in the limited amount of vaccines that we have. So uh, we are starting to reserve uh for our vaccine appointments. We're set, right now, we're saving per the state direction, seventy percent for people over the age of sixty-five and thirty percent for people in essential sectors, including education and childcare. So right now, what we're doing is we're doing targeted outreach. We're 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 calling supermarkets. Soon we'll be calling schools. So if you guys told us, uh, yeah, we got a bunch of schools that are ready to go in person, we would probably, but the way we would probably do it is rather than make you go through the county site, register, and wait for your turn, which is happening, but we just don't have very much vaccine right now. We would probably uh reserve a block of uh vaccine appointments for educators in some of our sites, like the Richmond Auditorium, like West County Health Center, like Contra Costa College, um, and have people coming through to the reserve sites with reserved appointments. So um, so that's what we're looking at. There's, the last week was really bad for vaccine. This week, we expecting to be really bad too, where we almost have no first-dose appointments. It's almost all second doses, just completing courses. But I think the week after that, so the week of, um, I guess that would be like starting around um, March seventh, I think we'll have more appointments. I'm hoping, we'll see what our state allocation is, but um, we'll see what that is, and I'm hoping we'll get be, we'll start to be able to move through the educators who are ready to come back in person or are already back in person. Um, and um, I'll, the only thing I will say that is still an uncertainty, and I know many of you that educators have Kaiser for their insurance, I think probably something like eighty or ninety percent. The the state is giving Kaiser more vaccine recently. Our allocation is down because Kaiser's allocation is up. So um, Kaiser in general has not gotten as much. So Kaiser in general has not gotten as much as their share of the insured population. So they are trying to get through their 65-plus. The county's done most of their patients already, but, but they're trying to get through them. But at some point, they will open up to the essential sectors also, and I'm hoping that that's soon, because so many of your people have their insurance through them. So, and I'm happy to answer any questions that come my way.
Thank you very much for that, Dr. Seveley. We are going to go to questions, so we could stop sharing the screen. Oh, you know, we don't have to. We'll just have you right there in front of everybody, magnified, right? So Mr. Gonzalez, I just have to remember the order without seeing the faces. Mr. Gonzalez, we're going to start off with you, if you have two questions for the doctor or for Supervisor Joya.
Thank you, President Phillips. I actually don't have any questions. Thank you both for being here and for the update.
Okay, all right. We're going to move on to Mr. Christian. Do you have any questions?
No questions.
Okay, and we're going to move on to, not seeing the faces. Mrs. Smith Folds, do you have any questions?
I don't have any questions. Thank you, President Phillips.
Okay, we're going to move on to Mrs. Reckler. Do you have any questions?
I do, thank you. So the first really isn't the question, it's just a restatement that you'll work with us to reserve lots of vaccine appointments for educators. So I just want to make sure everybody heard that and that we're prioritizing that and making that come, you know, happen. That would be terrific, and, and thank you for everything that you've done. You guys have really done a great job in your communication and in keeping us all in the loop. The second question, though, is about vaccine supply. And if you could just, for layman, explain what is going on just nationally with the supply, like from creation all the way down? Some of the stumbling blocks, it doesn't have to be a long explanation, but just to give us some ideas of how it's being allocated and created?
Sure, I, I don't know if I have it worked out all the way back to like the manufacturer, but I do know that right now, there's two approved vaccines in the United States, the Pfizer and the Moderna, the both two-dose vaccines. The Pfizer, the two doses are, are three weeks apart. The, the Moderna are, they're four weeks, but they can be extended more. The supply of both is gradually inching up. But what's happening as the supply increases is the federal government is creating new programs, like the pharmacy program, they're saying, okay, we're going to give a bunch of it to Rite Aid and CVS and Walgreens and Costco pharmacies. So we might not see more of the supply coming down to the county level. The other thing they've just added is some going to federally qualified health centers. So our county has some of those, so we'll get some of that, but it won't be in the regular county allocation. There's also that mass vaccination sites, like the one at the Oakland Coliseum. That comes out off the top before it comes to the states. Then there's some portion that then comes to the state. And then the state divides it up between counties and multi-county entities. The multi-county entities are, are big health systems that, that have a footprint in more than three counties. So those are like Kaiser, Sutter, Dignity Health, the prison system. So they'll divide it that way. And, and part of why we have been getting less is Kaiser has been getting more. They've shifted more to the multi-county entities recently. For a long time, Kaiser wasn't really getting their share, and they were complaining. So it's, there's always a bunch of lobbying behind the scenes there. There is some good news on the horizon. There's a new vaccine, a one-dose vaccine that's easier to store, the Johnson &amp; Johnson Jansen vaccine, that we expect will be approved next Tuesday, a week from today. They've already manufactured some, they have it ready to ship as soon as it's approved. We don't know how much we're going to get. It's, it's, it's pretty good. It's 85% effect, percent effective in preventing severe disease. It's not quite the percentages we see with Pfizer and the Moderna, but it's a one-shot vaccine. They're also going to be studying a two-dose for that same vaccine to see if giving two doses will increase, increase the effectiveness. And at the same time, by the way, they're also studying a one-dose for the, for the Pfizer and the Moderna to see if that's enough. So eventually, it could be that they're all pretty equivalent. And, and that's what I tell people when they say, which vaccine should I get? I tell them whichever one you can get, because they're all pretty good. And by historical standard, they're all better than the flu vaccine. They're all really top-notch at, at preventing illness and death. They're, they're really like sort of miraculous and how, how good they, how, how good they work. And I'm just really pleased how well they turned out. So we expect the supply to really open up around end of April, May. That's when we think pretty much anyone who wants a vaccine will be able to get it. But there is this big, big population that's coming up. The state has said will be opening up to on March 15th, which I don't know how we're going to do, because we're not even going to get through the essential workers. But they're saying people with pre-existing conditions, certain pre-existing conditions who are between the ages in 16 and, and 64 will be able to get the vaccine starting March 15th. Now, that's 10 million people in California. That's about a fif- a fifth of the state populations. If you, if you think about that in Contra Costa County, that, that's almost 200,000 people, you know, with pre-existing conditions, that will qualify essentially three weeks from today. And so when we opened up to essential sectors, lots of people signed up with that, with us. We suddenly had a, a waiting list essentially of 35,000 people. You know, to add a lot more people to that in three weeks is going to put a lot of pressure on us. Just, there just won't be enough vaccine to do it all quickly enough. So that's, that's a reality on the ground. That's the, the, the rules that the state has put out there. I wish they had delayed that a little longer, but you know, if I have a relative with a pre-existing condition, maybe I'm happy that they opened it up as soon as they did. So it's, it's just one of those things we're going to need to adjust to and live with. And we're ready to vaccinate. So yeah, it's really all about the supply coming through. And we're lobbying for it every, every place we get. We, we have our, our elected representatives involved at the supervisor level and also state senators and, and assembly people and representatives in federal government too. We're trying to get as much as we can.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Mrs. Reckler, I'm going to do what I did last time, because we do have a little more time before it gets to myself for questions. So if you have an additional question, because everybody passed, I'm going to let you ask it if you have it.
I do. I have another question, and that relates to trials and vaccination of our, our teens and children. And if you might, just a little bit, once again, just layman terms, quickly, the process of determining how those trials get done and how effectiveness is proven and outline the, the strategy going forward to find, you know, whether these are effective for kids or dangerous for kids.
Yeah, that's a great question. Yeah, right now, the, the Pfizer vaccine is okay down to age 16. They studied 16 and above and Moderna to 18. The, both companies have active trials in children, phase, phase three trials going down to age 12. So nobody's studying younger than age 12 yet. Those, there's three phases of trials. The first phase is just trying different doses on animals, making sure they're safe. That's phase one. Then there's phase two, which they give it to human beings. And just to make sure it doesn't kill them and not developing any major side effects seems reasonable enough to proceed. That's phase two. And then there's a phase three, which is giving it the vaccine to a bunch of people, giving a bunch of people a placebo. That's where you get to like 30,000 people, you know? And, and seeing if the people that got the, the real thing, the vaccine, did better than the people with, who got the placebo. So when those trials go faster, the more COVID is circulating out there. Because when there's a lot of COVID, you can see the difference between the groups much sooner than when there's not as much COVID. It takes a little while for the two, two, two lines on the graph to diverge. So we had great results with the, with the preliminary trials for adults for Moderna and Pfizer, because they were happening at a time when there was a lot of COVID. We saw the efficacy within a few months, and that the, the companies were able to submit the data to the FDA to get it approved. The, the 12 to, to 18 trials are happening now. Both companies, I think, are done enrolling. And it will probably take, my guess is about three months to get the data. And so my guess is by summer, we will have a vaccine, assuming that it pans out as safe and effective, which I suspect it will for that age group. I think we'll have a vaccine by the end of summer that's approved for age 12 and above. That's a guess, but it's, I think, a pretty educated guess. Then the, the companies, Pfizer had said they'll go down to, their plans to, to go down to age five, Moderna down to age six months. But I think they're going to do it sequentially. So I think they're going to wait to see that it's safe for age 12. And then that will go down to the younger age groups. So my guess is we're going to start the next school year with a, with a vaccine available for, for age 12 and above. I don't know if we will have had a chance to actually get it out to all those kids, you know? But, but I don't think we'll have a vaccine available and approved for the younger age groups by the time the next school year begins. But I think sometime during the year, assuming that it's, that it's safe and effective, we will have something, if I had to guess, maybe around winter break time for the younger cohorts.
Great, thank you.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Reckler. Mr. Leung, do you have any questions?
No, I do not. I just want to thank you for providing the updates.
Okay, thank you so much, Mr. Leung. I, I have a question, I have a couple of questions. So you guys have, when I say you guys, I mean the health department. You guys have the ability to do targeted vaccinations. And by what I mean, what I mean by that is either to go to a school site and, and vax the school employees on site, or like you said, you know, perhaps have a block of school employees go to a space like the Richmond Auditorium, for example. Is that right?
That's correct, yeah. We find that we're a lot more efficient when we have people come to us, because the setup is just, it goes so much faster. People are pre-registered, they show up, and, and, and one nurse and one registered agent clerk can do about, about 70 people in a day when you guys come to us. We can do about half of that when we go to, when we go out to a site. Plus, we need an extra person for the cooler and to monitor the temperature. And so it's a, it's much more efficient to have people come to our fixed site. So we tend to try to save the mobile teams for people who really have transportation issues and have a hard time with mobility or getting out to a site.
And so, and I'm going to ask a clarifying question as well. So while the tier is, are the appointments are now open to school employees, what I'm hearing you say is that you are actually going to prioritize within that tier or target within that tier school employees that are actually working with the public. So that's teachers, that means teachers who are working with children in person, correct?
Correct, yeah. Teachers, if, if you're a cafeteria worker who is, who sees kids there, then have contact with kids, and that counts the same as a teacher or, you know, an environmental services person, whatever. You know, if you, if you're having contact with the public, those are the people who get prioritized.
Okay. So for example, our food service workers who are handing out food every day to the public, that's a group of people that you could, that we could have Mr. Duffy contact you, and you could set a block of appointments aside now, for example, right?
Correct.
Okay, you're hearing this, Mr. Duffy, right?
Now, now, remember, we're the health department for the whole county, right? We have, I don't know how many school districts in the county. So, and, and remember also, we don't have vaccine right now. I mean, this came at a very difficult time, this opening up, because we opened up to essential workers at a time when we have the least vaccine. So if you contacted me today, I could probably give you some appointments about two weeks from now. So just, don't expect it like tomorrow.
Okay, so you're saying, so you're saying if we have a group, I'm trying to pin you down. So you're saying if we have a group of employees that are interfacing with the public, like our food service workers, for example, our staff, our superintendent can contact you or somebody at the health department and basically set appointments for them, and they would maybe get in in like two weeks to get their vaccine, is what you're telling me.
Yeah, we've, we've generally done it, like we just did a cohort of 300 educators who work with kids with developmental issues that preclude them from wearing a mask. So we just did that, and we went through the superintendent of schools office. So we, we went through Lynn Mackey. She surveyed all the districts. She said, give me your people who are doing that work with those kids who can't wear a mask. And we got them appointments, you know? That was all done, I think, in, within the last two days.
In the last two days, okay. And then so as you know, I think everybody knows, everybody's not working directly with the public or with children. So my next question is this, if we submit a plan to you to get some, when I say to you, I mean to the county, if we submit a plan to the county to get some students back on campus, those educators who will be going back under that plan, they would be able to get prioritization, and Mr. Duffy can work with your office to make that happen?
Correct, yeah. Those people who are going to be interacting with the public will be, should be the ones getting the priority.
Okay, that's my final question. I want to, just for a moment before we go, I want to say thank you to you, Dr. Seveley, for administering this program. I know that this is probably a headache, a huge headache, but in a good way, right? Because you're helping a lot of people. And I want to say thank you to our county supervisor, John Joya. Supervisor Joya, you, you know, you continue to fight for folks in West County. You continue to pick up the phone when we call. You continue to ask the tough questions, and you continue to push your colleagues, you know, in the right direction. So I want to just say to both of you, I'm very thankful for you coming here tonight to update us and to, to answer, you know, questions that our community has. And, and again, for taking the step to prioritize educators, because you didn't have to do that. And I know that that didn't have to happen, but because we have folks like the supervisor fighting for us up at Martinez, it did. So thank you for your time, and we really appreciate you. And now we are going to go on to our next presenter on this item. Thank you so much.
Thank you. I really appreciate it. And I'll just ask one last thing. If, if we do get to the point of getting the plan and getting lists of people, we, we have found that some teachers have found ways to go through like the Oakland Coliseum site, and that is also open to you right now, right? Like service war, essentials, essential workers from Contra Costa County are eligible to go to the Oakland Coliseum site. Right now, you can sign up through My Turn. They don't always have appointments. They're also short vaccine, but you're eligible. We found out that a lot of teachers have done that. So send us lists of people who still need a vaccine. It's, it's really like, we don't want to use up a precious slot for someone who's already gotten it. So that's, that, that would be my ask. And I appreciate all of you guys, all of you do. I know that, that the education sector has had a rough year, and these are really, really tough decisions you're all contending with. I, I just appreciate the deliberations and the thoughtfulness you're bringing to the conversation.
Well, well, just so I'm, I'm clear before we go, because I don't want people to get mixed up, right? So what you're saying is that you could sign up for an appointment now. You know, whether you are working with kids or not, you could do the My Turn in Oakland. But if we're talking about, and if you get an appointment, great. But if we're talking about prioritization, not vaccine lottery, right? Then we're talking about plans that come from, that we're talking about employees that work in districts that are either in person with children or who have plans to be in person with children. And you'll prioritize those people and take them out of the back. And then you'll prioritize those people and take them out of the vaccine lottery, right?
Exactly.
Okay, thank you so much, doctor. We really appreciate you got it straight.
Take care, bye bye.
Bye bye.
It's okay if we wanna stay on and watch and learn from the presentation for a while, okay?
You guys are welcome to stay here as long as you want.
Okay.
All right, so next, uh, we are going to bring up, uh, Christopher Jones. Who is the recreation director for the city of El Cerrito. Uh, we have heard, uh, a lot about San Francisco. Uh, and the pods that they have been running or the hubs that they've been running out there. Uh, but a lot of people don't know, uh, we have a little pod action in West Contra Costa. So El Cerrito has been doing the same thing. And so we have brought them in to talk to us about, uh, what their experience has been. So, uh, with that, I will turn it over to you. Thank you so much for being with us here today.
Thank you, sir. Let me get my. PowerPoint going. All right, uh, good evening, honorable board president and trustees. My name is Chris Jones, I am the recreation director in El Cerrito. And I'm joined tonight by recreation supervisor Eden O'Brien-Brennan. We really appreciate the invitation from trustee Reckler to come for you tonight. And hope that our experiences over the past year are useful to you as you consider returning to in-person instruction. For the families that both of our agencies serve. Um, although you may not know it, the partnership between El Cerrito and West Contra Costa. Unified School District is one of the most important relationships that we have, especially here in the Recreation Department. Providing on campus, performing for school care and sharing facilities. Maximizes the programs and services that both agencies offer to our common residents. Um, briefly, in addition to youth programs, the El Cerrito Recreation Department is a full-service provider of enrichment. And health and safety programs for people of all ages. From preschool to senior services and swimming to facility rentals and special events. We offer something for everyone and we have continued to serve our community with modified programming throughout the pandemic. Finally, uh, though we've certainly never experienced anything like this before. El Cerrito has a long history of providing childcare, uh, at school, at district schools in El Cerrito. Uh, going back forty years, El Cerrito is one of the first, uh, agencies to become licensed by the state from the early nineteen eighties. And this was only possible in partnership with the school district, uh, allowing us to build clubhouses on school property. So Eden's really gonna dig into the details, I can, I'll just give you a bit, a bit of an overview. Um, we began operating as soon as, well, close to as soon as we could when the shelter in place was, was lifted last summer. We started with summer camp where we had pods or cohorts of twelve campers. Um, and we averaged, uh, throughout, we had a number of pods and averaged about two hundred campers. Per day, uh, for nine weeks at park and parking recreation facilities throughout our city. In the fall, we transitioned to learning labs in the mornings and afternoon recreation and enrichment programs in the afternoons. With two hor- cohorts attending programs all day and the rest attending part of the day, mostly in the afternoon. We've averaged about a hundred and fifteen children per day in cohorts and now the cohorts consist of fourteen children. In addition to these programs, we also operate a small preschool and our gymnastics program utilizing the cohort model. And we have a robust swim, uh, program going on at our swim center. Uh, we could, at this point, we could probably operate five swim centers and still not have enough space. But we're here to talk about the kids. Um, demand for care is certainly very high for these programs, but unfortunately, the cost is also high. Um, there's been very little assistance, especially the government agencies thus far. Um, providing support and resources, um, to both childcare and camp providers and the families. Um, who may not be able to, uh, afford the cost. Um, our fees for all-day programs, um, have run anywhere from nine hundred dollars to twenty-six hundred dollars. Depending on the number of hours and days utilized, whether we're operating in three-week sessions or six-week sessions. Half-day programs have ran from three hundred dollars to seventeen hundred dollars. We do offer some scholarships, but certainly when you're talking about that kind of money, it does make it outside of the reach of. A lot of folks and that's, uh, regrettable. One thing though, that if people are having issues, um, and really need the care. Um, is that I would encourage you to contact, uh, COCO Kids, formerly the Contra Costa Childcare Council. Um, who actually does have increased funding, uh, for families who qualify based on their criteria. And that, that website is, uh, COCO, C-O-C-O, kids.org. And now I'm ready to turn it over, uh, to Eden O'Brien-Brennan.
Hi, thank you so much for having me. I'm very honored to be able to, um, hopefully give you some information that you might find helpful. It was really interesting to me to hear your previous presenters this evening. They had some tips that might help us and hopefully vice versa, and hopefully this won't be too much repeti- repetition of that. So from a process perspective, last March, almost a year ago, when we had that sudden shutdown. We immediately went into basically research mode. We wanted to reopen as quickly as we could, but we wanted to do it safely or as safely as we could. So that research involved following everything that was happening. From health experts like the CDC, um, the American Camping Association, the ACA. They were also working with the CDC, childcare licensing at a state level. And both the state and county health departments. So we were taking and correlating everything that we were learning from them about what the health guidelines should be. And then also keeping in close contact with childcare providers who were remaining open, serving essential workers. Because we could learn from them how these practices were working, what was really working. Could you really get a two-year-old to wear a mask, right? You know, so, um, and then we took what we were learning from those health organizations. And from those people out in the field to develop our own set of policies and protocols. Um, in doing that, we learned a couple of things, mostly from the CDC. You'll see the graphic that says good, better and best. When you look at the CDC guidelines for childcare and school, they're mostly the same. They often break it down to this would be a good way to do it, this would be a better way to do it, and this would be the best way to do it. So we were really shooting for best practices wherever possible. Budget is a consideration, sometimes logistics are a consideration, but best practices was a goal for us. One of our early learnings, uh, from a health expert was to look at safety as a continuum. So, um, a lot of parents and staff were questioning, is this safe? And they wanted a yes or no answer. But the truth of the matter is, all things are, you know, is how safe they are on a spectrum, right? How safe is it to ride my bicycle on a spectrum? Um, so starting to look at safety is not a black and white yes or no issue, but just being as safe as you can was really helpful. So we developed protocols for health screening, for facilities, for social distancing. Uh, for how to place children in programs, what to do if somebody became ill, all of those different things. And then once we developed our policies, we really wanted to have a plan for what implementation would look like. There's many educators, so you, you're probably familiar with this looks like, sounds like, feel like graphic, right? Um, and how would we put that into place and be the most prepared we could be? When we actually got out there and we're trying to do something that was similar to what we were used to doing, but also really different. We had the benefit of having a very experienced staff team. And that was crucial when we actually got into those first days of operating a program. Because some of the policies we had developed did need to be tweaked, did need to be changed. And even as it was happening, uh, even at our county level. The first two weeks we were offering program, children did not need face coverings. Then by week three, they did need face coverings. So we were having to adapt quickly. And having an experienced team that knew what they were doing and could make quick decisions with strong judgment was cr- critical for us. So with that, we're gonna switch sides, slides to training, talk about training for a bit. So we looked at training in two columns. So training about COVID, training about COVID is cleaning, PPE, sanitation, preventing the spread. Limiting sharing of supplies, those types of things. And really talking to staff a lot about the details of it, but always taking the time to explain why. Why it was so important, because we needed their buy-in, they needed to make changes and they needed to be bought in on actually doing those changes. Um, the other type of training that we were really looking at. Is a training on the impact we were seeing on youth. So how do we teach socially distant activities? How do we teach young children what six feet is? And you can see the graphic we've chosen here is a group of kindergarten to first graders. You are practicing what we call airplane arms. So we do a lot of things with airplane arms and we use pool noodles to play tag so that we can do noodle tag and be far apart and still play tag. Um, and we use hula hoops to create large spaces, um, cones and things like that. Because for children, you need very visual references, small children, telling them six feet does not really mean very much. So, so we trained on that. Um, we also talked to our staff to be really prepared for kids to be nervous, uh, worried, afraid. They were hearing things on the radio that they were completely developmentally unready to hear. Uh, they were afraid too. And as we all know with children, they're gonna present, that, that nervousness is gonna present in different ways, children are gonna act out in different ways. So we spent time training on that. Um, one of the biggest aspects of training was about communicating with children with face coverings on. And I think this is gonna be really important for you with educators who have been training over Zoom. And they haven't been having to do most of their, their communication with children in person. But as we all know, uh, how much of our communication is based on body language and facial expression, right? Um, when you have a mask on, and if you're outside a lot like we are, you might have a hat and a, and sunglasses on. Well, you can imagine not very much of the face is visible to a child. Um, and we are used to using our faces. Say, let's say I need to make a correction with a child who isn't wearing their mask properly. Or who is getting too close to somebody's space. Well, whenever you're making a corrective action with a child, you want them to see a warm, fuzzy, friendly face. You don't want them to take it the wrong way. So we are having to really work on using bodily gestures more. Um, and, and using language more, using spoken and written language more in communication. And that's a real habit to learn. Uh, for me, it's, it's still hard, I still forget that people can't see me smiling under my mask. So, uh, communicating with face coverings and learning to rely less on facial expressions has been a real big one for us. Um, and then the last part of staff training around youth work specifically. Is just really being clear with children about what is expected of them. Every little detail about what is expected of them, how we're gonna get to program, how we're gonna wash our hands when we get there. How we're gonna set up our stations, all those little details are very important for them to feel comfortable. So that's a little bit about training, let's move to the next slide on facility readiness. So when we began this program, it was early June last year. And our plan was to remain completely outdoors. We even thought that we would be outdoors primarily now and primarily in the fall. And we are outdoors more than your average program by a lot. We were looking at Sweden, we were looking at Norway, we were looking at places that were really able to do outdoor education and how were they doing it? And so initially that meant in terms of facility readiness for outdoors. It meant lots of canopies and pop-up tents, portable sinks for hand washing right there out on the field. Holding tables, chairs, things like that. So the room that you see in this picture on the slide, now we are doing some distance learning from that room. But back in the summer when we were primarily outdoors, this was just a hub. Supplies were kept in there, children went into those spaces just to use the bathrooms and wash their hands, but other than that, they were outside. Um, so that's a little bit about outdoors. Uh, and then we knew we were gonna have to prepare for being indoors. We were a little worried about that because the staff, the children, the families, everybody's more comfortable outdoors. But we knew it was inevitable, we would have to move indoors. And we had to do it more quickly than we expected. Because if you remember, we were thinking we would have poor air quality days due to smoke, hmm, maybe October? And all of a sudden, it's the second or third week of school and we have bad air quality days in August. And so that was, uh, a quick shift for us. We actually did have to close program for a couple of days while we made some adaptations. And what's really tricky here is that the recommendations for poor air quality. And the recommendations for COVID, you know, prevention in a classroom are exactly opposite. So if it's a poor air quality day, your doors and windows should be completely closed, you don't want that bad air coming into your facility. If it's a COVID situation or prevention of COVID situation, you want the exact opposite. You want as much natural airflow as you can. So within that very short period of time that we were closed, we were investing heavily. And having two HEPA filters for each of these classrooms, like you see here. Uh, we got base shields for the staff if they needed them and ninety-five masks, things that were, we're going to make everybody more comfortable inside. Um, for poor air days, we still took the children outside to eat. Um, because we decided that in that safety spectrum, we talked about. That, um, it was safer to be outside in poor air quality for a short fifteen minute, minute period of time and then come back in. Now, more recently, we've had a little bit of rain, not a lot. And some of our facilities do have awnings and ways for children to eat outside if it's raining, but not all of them. So then we've had to be again, more careful to make sure that the staff have access to the shields. Um, and other ways to keep themselves safe if children do have to take their masks off outside. Um, so those are a couple of things about facility readiness. Um, we also, of course, had to purchase lots of thermometers. You need more thermometers than you possibly think you could use, they're glitchy. These instant read thermometers, the batteries go out all the time, you always need a backup thermometer for each pod. Um, you need the sprayers or disinfectant and hand soaps and hand sanitizer, there's lots of containers. And of course, PPE gowns, things like that and an isolation area. And actually, just recently, we had to incorporate having hand lotion in our pods. Because our children wash their hands so many times a day that they were getting really dry skin from that. Some programs focus more on sanitizer than hand, uh, hand washing. And everybody has to make their own decisions. Uh, with small children, you can absorb some chemical through the skin. So we really prefer to use hand washing whenever we can. But that often means more than ten times a day, the children are washing their hands and that is a lot. Um, so I think that's it for facility readiness, I'm ready to move to the next side on cleaning. Uh, we're probably all aware with the difference between cleaning and disinfection. And childcare workers do follow under the Healthy, Healthy Schools Act. In terms of having a requirement to go through pesticide regulation training. So they are familiar with the difference between cleaning and disinfecting. But we did spend significant time reviewing this and making sure everybody was clear. Because it is important and there is a natural kind of decision that people make to just, just. I'll just spray the disinfectant and everything will be fine. Um, but you can't spray something that's dirty, so that was an important thing to go over. Um, we use in our program two different types of disin. We use in our program two different types of disinfectants. We have a more chemically based. Disinfectant that is less expensive that we use when children are not present or if we're doing the play structure or something like that. But we do have to do a lot of disinfecting around children when they are present, which usually would not be allowed. So we've invested in, there are natural products, Botanic Clean is one, but there's more than one. That do meet the EPA list and list for COVID. Uh so you can get natural disinfectants that are a lot safer to have in a classroom around children. So we have two types and we change, we teach that as well. And then you also have to be ready for your staff to accommodate changes to their scope of work. Uh so our childcare teachers do more of the cleaning and more cleaning than. They ever would have thought they would have had to do. And even our janitorial or custodial crews are having to change their scope of work some and do more intense disinfecting. There's the daily disinfecting that happens. Some some disinfecting is daily, some is multiple times a day. And then, of course, if you ever do have an exposure, you need to do a pretty thorough, deep cleaning of the facility before you reopen. Okay, ready to move on to the next slide. So COVID nineteen response, what do you do when you actually have an exposure? We have had direct exposures and you really do wanna be ready for it to the extent that you can. Uh you'll see on your screen the most current version of the school guidance that Contra Costa Health Services puts out. You wanna have that at the ready. Um you also wanna be checking to make sure you have the most current versions. Of the guidelines because they do change. So always make sure you have the most current ones. And they do really walk you through their step by step, even just from the little bit of it you can see here. That helps you know to make the decision whether you're gonna have to make a notification to a pod. Or not, whether you're gonna have to close a pod or a quarantine. Or not, and having that to to back you up is really important and helpful. A couple of notes about when exposures do happen. You really need to be ready to act quickly. The sooner you do notify people, the less likely they are to expose others and that's very important. And you will want to be preparing families for getting doctors' clearances when children have illness. Some families really weren't expecting that. They were expecting. You know, if my child just gets a COVID test and test negative, that might be enough. But oftentimes. We do need a doctor's clearance to move forward with having them return to a pod. So um I do wanna take a point to mention now and I'm gonna reiterate this again. At the end because it is so important, at least for our program. And our program is a small program. But at the same time, for every exposure we have had, we have had no spread. None. We've had staff people have COVID. We've had families have some COVID, not as much. Um we've had staff and families who have lived with people who had COVID. And at no time has that resulted in COVID actually spreading to somebody in one of our pods. And we think that's huge and somewhat backs up what Dr. Jean Noble told you on your January twentieth. Presentation about that. Again, we're a small sample study, but for us, it matters a lot, helps with our comfort level. So um I think we're ready to move on to lessons learned. So I broke this into three categories, logistics being the the first one and. Some people might consider their consider this more operational. So what are some things we've learned by doing this now for since last June, nine or 10 months? Being outside does matter. Being outside really matters. Be outside as much as you can. And the second one would be. Do what you can to prevent cross-contamination between pods. And for instance, in the photo you see here, there is more than one pod at that site. So if you do have an exposure, what you don't want is that exposure to spread to other pods or what you would call a cohort. And in your school setting, what you're looking at, you're going to have multiple cohorts. So how can you contain that and keep it from going from one pod to the other? One of the best ways to do that is to keep people in the same household in the same cohort. I think that's probably easier for us to adapt to than a school environment. But in our environment, it means siblings really should be in the same pod. We don't require it, but we heavily encourage it. Because if I had, my children are grown, but if I had two children and one was in Pod A and one was in Pod B. And Pod A was exposed, well, guess what? Now Pod B is at risk. Because somebody in Pod B lives with somebody that was exposed. So doing everything you can to limit that cross-contamination between pots. That also includes staff members. In fact. Within the state of California Guidelines for Childcare. They really encourage if you have staff members who live in the same household. For them to work in the same cohorts or pods as well. Uh so not having cross-contamination between pods. And then the other thing is really focusing on not having any spread within a pod, which. Is mostly covered by the protocols we have. Another good way or important way to reduce. Cross-contamination, cross-contamination in pods is substitution. And this is something I have spoken to some of your principals about. It is a concern. Moving forward, needing substitute teachers, how is that going to work? And I'll be quite honest, it is tricky. It is a lot of my job to work on substitution right now because. Going back to that good, better, best um that we're looking at. It would be considered good and allowable by the county and the state to place a substitute. In one pod one day and let that person work in another pod the very next day. Uh what we are truly shooting for is only using one substitute. In one cohort or pod within a week. And having a good break before they move from one pod to another again to avoid cross-contamination. So. Substitution is is a tricky business. Having program, this is another point, having program multiple days in a row. Also helps control, this one helps control the spread, not so much cross between pods. But within your pot or stop exposure possibilities within a pot. So. If we had a cohort that ran Monday, Wednesday, Friday versus having it run Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday. By by spreading out your group over like every other day. Your chances of exposure are significantly higher. Because when a person shows symptoms, they're considered contagious for forty-eight hours before that. And so if children were there every other day, more children might get exposed. For instance, in our program, we're currently running Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday and not Fridays. Multiple times I've had parents or staff people report symptoms on a Sunday. And because that they were not at program on a Friday or a Saturday, they did not expose the pod. So this is kind of hard for me to explain. I hope it makes sense. But how you organize any hybrid structure, uh having children clump together. More quickly and having breaks may be better in terms of reducing exposure. Here's an interesting thing we've learned recently with all the breaks. Once we had the holiday break and now just recently President's Week break. What we've learned, well, what we knew already was that the staff and the families are having to build a lot of trust. They have to trust each other that they are, everyone in their pod is following the rules, doing the right thing. Trusting that the staff or the families aren't out partying on the weekends or. Traveling to other countries and doing things they're not supposed to do. Um and then what happens whenever you have a break, a holiday break, there's always this fear. Do I really believe that the family didn't go on vacation? Do I really believe they didn't visit with the grandparents? Well. Each time we come back from a break, some families are actually choosing to stay home a day or two. Just to wait and see and make sure there were any symptoms. So breaks do cause stress. Okay, so those are my logistical learnings. Let's move on to communication learnings. And the type of work that we do, having a relationship with families and children is really important. Building trust with families, they're leaving their most important prized possession with you. Really important and they wanna feel like it's safe. How would we usually do that in person, face to face? Please come visit the program, take a tour. But the parents are not allowed in the program at all. So how do we build that rapport and that trust? Well, we hold orientations, we have Zoom Q and A sessions before we start programs. We have open houses and art shows virtually. We do a lot of photo sharing on Flickr sites and things like that so that families can see. Actually firsthand what's happening in the program as much as possible. Another communication learning is to be transparent, as transparent as you actually can. But maintain confidentiality, confidentiality at all cost. For instance, now that we're finally, yay, starting to get into the queue to get a vaccine, starting to get into that waiting line. Uh which we're excited about. Interestingly, parents really wanted to be told when their childcare teachers were vaccinated. And I completely understand why they want that information. And yet that is confidential information about an employee that I cannot reveal. So that balance of being transparent but maintaining confidentiality is a balancing act. So a couple final, what I'm gonna call general learnings. Like I said before, in our limited experience, uh we did feel that from all of your panelists that spoke at January twentieth. That a lot of the things they were saying about how COVID spreads in childcare and why it doesn't spread in childcare. And when it actually does get to childcare, we felt that our experience really did validate what they were saying. Another learning that we're putting in the general category is. School readiness. We knew when we started this program last June. We were very concerned that entering TKs and entering kindergartners would be especially unready. Because that last three months of preschool is vital. That last three months of preschool is all about making the transition to school. And they lost out on that and we wanted to be prepared for that. To the point where we actually didn't accept any TKs in the summer. And we did not even accept any TKs at the beginning of the fall until we had our program routine up and running. And then we began to bring in some TKs. Um and it was true, our fear was. True, we were seeing kindergartners and first graders even be unprepared, especially socially. Even now in programs, we're seeing children fall behind. In social development, especially at impulse control. Uh one of the things a kindergartner or TK, even a first grader is learning in in school. Isn't academics, but they're learning how to how to not interrupt their teacher. Right? Um but they can't really learn those types of impulse control through Zoom that well. They just get muted and they don't learn those types of behaviors. So we are concerned that when children do go back to the pro to school. Uh that teachers are gonna need to be ready for them to go back to basics, what we call in the industry. Back to crisscross applesauce because they are really gonna need to start there. And just a couple last points. Again, I mentioned that if you do have an exposure, you need to act quickly. I wanna say. You need to look at this as being available twenty-four seven. Being ready for an exposure is not a Monday through Friday nine to five job. Chris can tell you, Saturday night, December twenty-sixth. Till ten PM at night, we were doing exposure notifications because it was that important to do it that quickly. So you really need at least one person on call to be able to be at the ready to do it as quickly as possible. And then my last little lesson is just like, well, we are learning a lot about change. We're learning that as we go every day, the lessons we learn change, the protocols we utilize change. And that we learn and learn and learn from change and that's a good thing and it's something to hold on to when it gets tough and it feels overwhelming. Just remember how much we're gonna have learned from this. A lot. Those are my learnings. I may have forgotten something, so I wanna turn it back over to Chris to see if he has any last points or. Things I may have slipped.
No, I think as always, uh we know who the expert in this area is at the the Recreation Department, so thank you, Eden. And and we look forward if if any of you have any uh questions for us.
Thank you so much uh to both of you for that presentation. We are going to try to fit two questions in uh for each board member. If possible, so we're gonna start with Mr. Gonzalez Hoi. You have. Two questions.
Thank you and good evening. Thank you for being here. Uh and I apologize, my internet cut out. At the beginning of your presentation, so I might be repetitive with my questions. Um how many uh kids do you serve?
Last summer, we had seventeen pods of twelve and now we have fourteen, now we have seven. Seven pods of fourteen children and then another pod of preschool children and a pod of gymnastics children. So nine pods altogether right now. We expect to expand back to probably even more than seventeen pods this summer.
Thank you so much for that. Um and my second question, uh you talked about exposure a lot. Um how many cases have you all seen? Of exposures?
We've had. A handful of staff um who have become positive to COVID. Probably another handful of. Children or their family members who have um become positive to to COVID. You know, you know, maybe around ten total people who've actually had COVID and we do track that. Uh we we keep all the negative tests and and all the quarantines and get doctors' clearances. Um and then other than that, we've probably had. About four or five pods that had exposures with no actual quarantine where there was a real concern where somebody. In a home had COVID, but that COVID never actually, the person who was coming to our pod never developed COVID. So which was interesting to us to learn because we really felt like. Well, once you have COVID in the home, isn't it impossible? It must it must be that every single person gets COVID in the home and that doesn't necessarily happen. So.
Thank you for that and thank you for what you're both doing. That was my last question.
Thank you very much, Mr. Gonzalez Hoi. Uh Mr. Christian, do you have two questions?
Uh no questions.
Thank you very much, sir. Uh Mrs. Smith Folds, do you have questions?
I do. Uh what's the demographics of your participants?
Trusty Smith Folds, this is hard for my heart to answer this question. It really is. I spent the bulk of my career. In nonprofit really looking out for families who needed us most and it is very difficult right now that who we serve. I would say that ethnically it is a pretty diverse group, but socio-economically. It is people who can afford to pay for a program that is much more expensive than our programs would usually cost.
Okay, thank you. And so. If you could send me the actual like breakdown, I would appreciate it, like the breakdown ethnically and racially of your program, that would be great. My second question is, you said that you require them to have a medical note coming back. So what happens with the kids who don't have medical care or a doctor? What's the policy or procedure in place?
That hasn't really been an issue for us so far. When we do have an actual exposure, we are working closely with the county health department. Um they assign a caseworker slash nurse to us in any of those cases and they would assist that family with getting care.
Okay, and you think that that really doesn't happen? I'll take Othr's question, mister. You think that really doesn't happen because of the social economic. Place that you serve, correct?
Okay.
All right, thank you. That's it.
Mrs. Smith Folds, thank you very much. Um sometimes when we have extra time, I I will give people the questions, but we can't just take them, right? But I'll give them to you. So. Now we're gonna move on to Mrs. Reckler.
Thank you. Thank you for being here and thank you for your presentation. Good to see you again. I I don't have a question, but I'm hoping that you would. I I don't have a question, but I'm hoping that you would restate again your policy, your Fridays off. And your, you know, that whole cycle, which I thought was. An important takeaway that we might want to hear again for anybody that might have missed it.
Thank you. I'll do my best to explain uh. Pre-algebra is not my strongest point, but it comes, it comes down to that kind of way of looking at it. If you have forty-eight hour windows of exposure. Meaning that somebody is contagious for forty-eight hours before they show symptoms, then. How long it's been since a child has been or or a po- anybody in the cohort, staff person has been around that cohort? If they have not been around that cohort, then they are obviously less likely to be exposed. So if I had a program that was Monday and then off Tuesday and then Wednesday, then. For those three days, well, if two of those days were in the forty-eight hours, they were definitely exposed. But if I had that same three days and it was Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday. The likelihood of exposure drops. And so we we just learned when we stopped doing Friday programs for a while. That we were seeing that that meant less exposure notifications for that reason.
Okay, thank you. And no, no further questions for me. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. And this item is actually long, so we need to get to the next. Presenter, which is why we're not taking up the extra questions on this one, kind of ebbs and flows. Mr. Leon, do you have any questions?
Uh I don't have any questions. I just want to thank the presenters for coming today.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Leon. I don't have any questions or if I do, I'll submit them uh later. I want to say thank you uh to both uh Mr. Jones and Ms. O'Brien Brenner. We greatly appreciate uh you coming and speaking with us on this evening. We also appreciate the work that you've been doing in El Cerrito uh to serve kids uh who live. Uh in our community. So this was very helpful. And we again, thank you very much for taking the time uh on this uh late evening to actually share. Uh lessons learned uh from the city of El Cerrito and and to let people know that it's not just San Francisco that runs pots. So um with that said. We are going to uh move uh to our next. Speaker, one second. I'm sorry, uh that said, we're going to move on to our next speaker. Um and we are bringing in uh Mr. Itoko. I'm sorry, Dr. Itoko Garcia, uh who is the superintendent of uh the Sausalito Marin City. School district. For those of you who have been waiting to hear from a public school district. Here you go. Uh they have been doing fantastic work and they are coming here uh to share with us. Uh on this evening, um some of their lessons learned and we greatly appreciate the time that they have set aside. Uh for us today. Um so that said, uh Dr. Garcia, uh he has a presentation that he's going to give us. We need to turn over screen sharing uh for him and uh sit back and uh and and learn. Thank you, uh Dr. Garcia. We welcome you here today.
Uh thank you, President Phillips and uh members of the uh board and community for the invitation and Superintendent Duffy. I also want to thank all the other presenters tonight. I think that um this kind of information session. Is critical to sharing and spreading best practices and getting our schools open. And I think, um you know, before I I launch into my formal presentation, I just want to say that. Um I really strongly believe that this is um one of the main equity issues of our day and our time. Um and and the impacts of this pandemic on uh low income BIPOC communities. Uh communities much like I serve in Marin City and that you all serve in West Contra. Um that are um have high numbers of uh black and and Latina, Latinx populations. Um and and high, high density. And uh some lower income uh areas have been really disproportionately affected by school closure. And by this pandemic and that the um social emotional cost, let alone the academic cost of that, I think. We will be calculating for years. And so um the message that I'm here to share with you all is. Really open schools however, and in whatever capacity that you possibly can. And I think there's been some compelling uh reasons as to why we should do this. I would just add some words from Dr. King here as um a little impetus and motivation. Some of the early studies that we're now seeing in communities where schools have been open. Um do suggest that there's a correlation to having schools open and having lower rates of COVID transmission. Um as I mentioned, the community that we serve, Marin City, um is a. Predominantly black and Latino community, predominantly low income, one of the highest density. Communities in uh the county of Marin and we've had a case rate of less than three percent this entire pandemic. One of the things I also really appreciated. Uh that some of the other presenters really hit upon, which I'm going to start my presentation with here. Is is really our reopening story and our reopening story starts on March the sixteenth. Of twenty twenty. And why I think that reopening story is so important to highlight and why I thought it was so interesting to hear that from the other presenters. Is it, it kind of outlines in each individual community and and granted, we all have different contexts. I I have a tiny school district, one school, we're a basic aid school district. Um so you know, drawing an apples to apples comparison between the challenge before you all in West Contra Costa. And in Sausalito Marin City, um is, I don't think is really possible. But I hope that there are some lessons that you all can learn from what folks have presented here tonight and what I can present. There's three major components that I I think are critical to getting schools back open in person. Um and in person for all. They they are leadership, they are labor and they are love. Um and 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 in the leadership, I mean in particular. Um whoever you can get back on campus, whether it's your principals, assistant principals, deans. Your custodians, whoever it is. Um I would strongly recommend that you have a daily in-person meeting. Um some of the folks here have uh mentioned that um doing things outdoors um is critical. Um I would recommend that as well, of course, wearing masks, a socially distance, at least six feet apart. Um and that those meetings are entirely focused on whatever you need to do to tighten up your current operations. And and in particular that they have an eye to opening. Um a couple of other things that I think are important to um attend to, which I'll expound upon a little bit here. Is how how we get our labor partners to the table? How do we do this? We've we've heard from private school folks and 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 rec centers and daycare people. And um some of those people um may be in a collective bargaining context like we are as public school districts. Um and many are not. And so um it's really critical that that we do this with our labor partners. It's really critical that we do this with our public health department. Great presentation by your deputy public health officer. There's absolutely no way we would have school open for not one single minute of one single day. Without the very tight collaboration and cooper- cooperation with the Marin County Public Health Department. You have to do this together, arm in arm, everybody. Um and uh some things I'm going to outline here uh are are a system of shared governance. And really using consensus building as a tool to create these back to school plans. Um so that our labor partners are as comfortable as we are in operating school. Um lastly, I know we don't talk about love a lot in public education. It's it's a little bit of a taboo. I think we need to talk about love a lot more and and I'm referencing this in in a sense that is. Completely devoid of anything to do with romance, but one that is about love for our community and love for ourselves. We we really have to follow the science um on on this pandemic. And that science is really starting to to point us that school reopening is an act of community care. That having open schools creates safer communities. Why? Because when you have schools with structured environments, with masks, with social distancing. And with activities. You have a lower transmission rates in the community. I live in Oakland. My kids go to Oakland Public Schools. I'm a parent. I have a two-year-old. Have a nine-year-old, have a seventeen-year-old. I understand intimately the challenges that trying to. Support your student on remote learning has, it is emotional, it is hard. And parents are as fried as school staff are on trying to figure all of these things out. Part of that, and you've heard, we've heard other presenters tonight reference that. You know, people have hard home lives and and I don't dispute that at all. Um I I'm born and raised in this in 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 the Bay Area and. Um we we do have some some challenging lives. Depending upon where we live and where we come from, but but that's also a strength. Uh of 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 ours and and a strength of our communities and. When parents get fried, it makes it harder for us to keep up with our kids. And many of our kids are running around the neighborhood, not wearing masks, not socially distancing. Um and not generally doing the things that we know it requires to reduce and lower transmission. And that's why I strongly believe opening schools is an act of community care that can help lower transmission. Uh I won't belabor it too much, but the mental health impact of this pandemic on many youth. Is um tremendous. And I think that I am comfortable at this point saying, and I'm not an epidemiologist, I'm not a medical doctor. Right? I'm a doctor of education. I'm just a school superintendent. But I believe strongly that we can, we can say at this point that the cost. To our students' social emotional uh well-being as well as their academic development. Is starting to outweigh whatever cost it is to public health to reopen school. Um and and lastly, opening school is an act of love because it's what we need to mitigate learning loss. So we had one week, just like the rest of you all, to plan to completely change and transform. Our education system. Um we had an all-staff meeting on Friday, March the sixth. We directed our staff to create two weeks of work packets. I already had a shared governance structure in place prior to this pandemic. I think it was very important in our ability to reopen and reopen quickly. Here's an example of our team charter. And the kinds of things that the shared governance team works on. You can hear, see here, changes in program, schedule, curriculum, calendar, events, culture and climate, safety, PD days. And in that shared governance meeting, uh we planned. For basically two days, the sixteenth and the seventeenth. We planned to distribute tech and work packets. Um and and then we decided we would reconvene uh in the afternoon of the seventeenth to figure out what to do. Well, that meeting on that auspicious Friday, the thirteenth of twenty twenty. With my staff, with my shared governance team, came on the heels of a meeting with the county emergency. Command team in the county of Marin. I was one of the superintendents that was invited into that. Command meeting because there was a concern in the county of what the lockdown would do to our community. And what I saw there was something that modeled for me that I I don't think we see often as educators. I saw our fire chief and our police chief and our chief medical officer and uh various other homeless agencies. Uh agencies for um folks with disabilities. Um the an amazing intersection of uh community stakeholders there. Planning how to respond to this emergency. And it gave me an idea. If this is good enough for the county, if this is good enough for the sheriff. Maybe this is how our organization should function in a crisis. And so what you see here, when I say outside socially distance. This is what I mean. This is how we met all spring and all summer. The first thing we did was figure out, how do we feed kids that are not at school? And then we figured out. How do we work to engage kids that aren't engaging with distance learning? Once we had those few things dialed in. We looked around, we saw this mask mandate coming. We knew that our community members are arrested at eight times. The rest of the county. And we did not want PPE to be an issue that supported. Further negative interactions between law enforcement and our community. And so with some local nonprofits, we let a mask drive that produced uh enough masks to cover the entire community. And then so. I think not only having an emergency command meeting where you have boots on the ground and you're trying to figure it out in person. But the problem solving framework that you use in that emergency command meeting is critical. I'm a big cycle of inquiry person. Anytime we had a problem, we pulled the data. What's going on? What are we solving for? We set some goals about how to make it better. We created a theory of action as a team and we created a plan and then we acted and then we reflected and adjusted on that plan. That allowed us to troubleshoot a lot of things and and make conditions better relatively quickly. We got to focus on safety and student learning. Basically by the third week of the pandemic. We did that along with shared governance by using this system of consensus building. It's very simple. It's not Robert's Rules of Order. It's not a yes, no vote. It's a. Hmm, three, four or five is a yes, zero, one and two are a no. And every point, every decision we made along the way as an emergency command team or as a shared governance team. We used a consensus building mechanism and we worked the plan through until we had a hundred percent consensus. That process, those structures allowed us. To get MOUs with both our classified and our certificated staff. As a small organization, CSEA and our CSEA unit members. Knew and understood that we basically could not function if they didn't come to work. There, there was no way. We've only got a small number of uh food service folks and custodial staff. We we could just simply not operate as an organization without their support and without their cooperation. So we worked together to to find some common ground so that they could come back. Um one of the things we did was again, work very closely with our public health department. On that third day. Actually, on the afternoon of that second day, March the eight, or the March the seventeenth. We had an all-staff meeting. It was socially distanced. And um I told anybody that was immunocompromised or sixty-five years of older. Where they could go home and then they didn't have to come to work. And that was something that paved the way for people that did not fall in those categories to come to work. That was a main component of our CSEA MOU. It was a little different negotiating with our teacher union. They were less willing to come back to work, but through shared governance. We built a bunch of provisions for adult and student safety and it really started from that CSEA MOU. The agreements that we put in place there for worker safety, for PPE, for sanitizing, for cleaning, for social distancing, really led the way for um, our agreement with our teachers union, which was one of the first in the state. And so we kept communicating strongly with everybody involved, with our board members. And this led to our first cohort of kids getting back on campus by May the twentieth. This gentleman right here that you see a picture of, I I grew up around the community where I'm the superintendent. We were friends since we were kids. He passed away under this pandemic and left two kids in our schools. And I remember when we reopen, he came to me and he said, man, thank you so much for getting school open. A lot of us can't work without school. So what happened in these few weeks, six weeks of distance learning, was that much like many people have said tonight, kids were all over the place. Some were doing really well, some kids that maybe didn't do so well in class were doing great on distance learning. A lot of kids were not doing well. Some kids didn't seem to be engaging at all. And so we came up with a um, distance learning multi-tiered system of support. Uh, much like you would have MTSS for your in-person learning. Uh, we were able to partner um, with uh, some local nonprofits and we created a check-in checkout system for our kids who weren't engaged. Those folks uh, called a child in the morning, gave them a wake-up call, uh, did some goal setting with them, and then would call in the afternoon after distance learning was over and um, do a checkout call, see if they'd met their goals, provide them with any tutoring that they needed. Um, even with that level of support, uh, we still had probably about twenty percent of our kids that were not engaging with distance learning. Um, so we did some home visits. We went and knocked on doors. We let them know about the um, the mentoring program that we had. And um, uh, another five, eight percent of kids became engaged. We had a group of about twelve to fifteen percent that no matter what we seemed to do, even though we had given them hotspots and computers, didn't seem to be engaging with distance learning. So we went to their parents and we said, hey, we're really worried. Um, it seems like whatever we're doing isn't working. Would you consider letting your child come to campus so we can help them with distance learning? About seventeen parents said yes. And with the support of our CSEA partners, who really provided that supervision while teachers were teaching from home, we got that first small cohort of kids back on campus. Took a lot. You've heard a lot of people say this, but daily monitoring of student progress during distance learning is key. However, we can do it. As soon as we got kids back on campus, we use those same public health guidelines that were shared by our pre-K partners that shared earlier tonight. In terms of facilities and cleaning, in terms of PPE, staff training, the staff to child ratio, we staffed at twelve to one. And we knew even at that time that in-person school options are tied to lower hospitalization rates um, and lower COVID rates overall. We had a couple of town halls. We had a lot of communication with staff. And um, that's one of the things that really um, got our teachers back on campus. After a couple of weeks, they said, hey, we see our our parent educators working in person with the kids. Can we come and do distance learning from our classrooms? We said, yes, absolutely. That also paved the way for our MOU for the fall. By the end of school, by June, we had probably half of our teachers working um, doing remote learning from campus. We had to work out a lot of basic logistics to open in-person school for all students. We opened on September the fourteenth, twenty twenty, five days a week, six hours a day for all kids. We had to figure out staffing and scheduling, curriculum and instruction, meals, student registration, a bunch of different things. Again, we came up with um, some pretty um, amazing student trainings, staff trainings, based on those initial experiences, required face coverings, daily health, check-in and checkout, regular screening during the day. And again, our staff really made all this possible. Our CSEA staff agreed to staff all these positions and to do all these health checks and to make sure kids were sanitized. And and we're going through this daily health screening. We have staggered arrival and dismissal times. We use every single entrance to campus. So every single cohort has their own entrance and exit and arrival and dismissal time. Uh, every single cohort has their own dedicated recess time. They have their own dedicated bathrooms. Um, we do meal service directly in the classroom. We canceled the cafeteria as we know it's probably a a high risk of transmission. Um, so we serve meals directly in the classroom. Kids and teachers clean up. Um, and to date, we have had no uh, problems with cleaning or maintenance as a result of serving food in the classroom. Um, our desks are six feet apart. And you can see, we have small class sizes. Um, I was able to um, work with our board to pass a budget that allowed us to staff at a thirteen to one student to teacher ratio. We are up to fifteen to one in our middle school classes. We have been open, as I said, since September, TK through eight for all kids. At this point, we only have nine students left on distance learning. I think leaning into problem solving and flexibility is probably the key to opening schools. Student arrival time wasn't as clean as it was on paper when we planned it. We had to continue to adjust supervision times and um, who was staffing what and where to make it work. Even by June eleventh, we had gotten to three hundred and seventy combined days of kids. We're now on six months of in-person instruction. I agree with all the presenters before us, communication is key. We, we, we have, we have text relationships with parents um, and and phone calls and emails more than you would ever imagine. Um, but that really creates that authentic connection with students, peers and teachers. And watching kids graduate. Um, we did a, we did a a car caravan last year, which we'll probably do again. Um, was really amazing. So all of that small scale bed, getting back to school, um, allowed us to work out some of the kinks and the routines or procedures that we needed to get our MOU signed um, and create that system instruction for everybody coming back. Um, a few other things that I'd like to share that we did that I think are important. I heard one of the other presenters talk about um, the challenges that that they're seeing with preschool kids on emotional regulation and just like being in community with other kids, being in schools. I think that's critically important as well. And I think um, any reopening plan needs to really attend to that. Um, we've got kids at home for months. They haven't been around their peers. So focus on school culture and climate is key. Um, we had an enhanced PBIS kickoff week. We did nothing but routines and procedures for the first week of school. Um, we had increased uh, planning and collaboration time for our teachers. We had some increased PD days to start the year. Um, one of the other features of our MOU is that teachers have an hour of prep time to start the day and an hour of collaboration time between two and three PM, five days per week, to continue to work on plans like this. So we created these school-wide PBIS lesson plans. And then we taught them consistently for two weeks. Unidirectionality, mask wearing, hand washing, social distancing. Um, and these are, these are lessons that our teachers actually created of the behaviors that they wanted to see. Um, we also did that in um, K two. What's so fascinating about this, and I I believe in PBIS for many reasons, but this focus on routines and procedures not only helped staff and students um, open safely with with these COVID procedures, but it made the school culture and climate in every other way dramatically better. Um, we've got almost one hundred percent implementation with what we're doing in terms of COVID procedures. And so I think it really changes the bar for implementation in our systems for other things. Um, I couldn't agree more with some of the other presenters. Um, I've never seen happier or more engaged students. I've never seen so few days lost to sickness by staff and or students. It is truly amazing to see the level of engagement with teaching and learning and the appreciation that students and parents have being back on campus. We have QR codes at every entrance and every room to help track and trace. So you scan with your phone when you go in and out of spaces. We have the health survey for staff on that QR code, although we are still doing it in person with kids. The only place where we have any risk of cohort mixing, and I just want to triple and quadruple down on what the other presenters have said, keeping your cohorts separate is everything. Uh, the only place where we, we, we run any kind of a risk is um, during lunch, we have two cohorts out on the playground, but they're on opposite ends of the playground. Otherwise, we keep the cohorts really, really separate in almost all ways. Only our middle school cohorts um, share teachers. Our play structures are open. Um, they, the kids just sanitize before and after use. Um, and and again, constant reflecting and 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 adjusting. This is a constant cycle of inquiry. We are constantly working to try to figure out how to do this better and more safely um, as the information changes from public health and from the feds and the state. We have had five uh, instances of COVID. All of them were folks that were infected in the community and either came to school or to work prior to realizing that they had been infected. These are the number of scenario twos where student and staff was exposed to someone who tested COVID positive. And then the number of scenario threes where a student or staff tested positive. Um, what's most important about this data is even though we've now had um, five cases where someone was COVID positive and was either at work or at school for at least a day or two before they found out, we too have zero in-school COVID transmissions. I think one of the things that um, our partnership with public health has really helped underscore is that all of these things, all of these guidelines for reopening school basically assume that everyone in the building is COVID positive and are are measures that would reduce or uh, or mitigate the risk of transition to make it so small that it's safe to operate school. And I, I think we have a lot of evidence now that shows that it is safe to operate school and even when COVID positive, there, even when there are COVID positive cases in school, that uh, often there is no in-school transmission. And so I want to just honor the fact that they're very different contexts, they're very different resources, they're very different sizes. And so I just want to encourage all of you tonight and anyone listening to open for small groups of students with whoever you can. Administrators, classified staff, any willing cert- certificated staff, whether that's to support student uh, distance learning or it's a minimal return to in-person instruction for students with IEPs or students who are not participating or disengaged with distance learning or English language learners or uh, homeless and foster youth. Um, once you have proven inside of your organization that a small group of dedicated individuals can operate safely and can really change the world, you can begin to expand that. Whether it's hybrid some days for each grade level or half days for each grade level, operate at the capacity that you can keep people six feet apart and safe, whatever that is. Um, full opening with a distance learning option for families that are immunocompromised or just don't want to come in person, I think is critically important as well. And I just want to encourage us all to move away from talking about if school will open to how school will open. And I am just amazed by the efforts of our public health department and um, and our schools to support vaccine efforts. And the vaccine is really important. And I want to underscore that we've been doing this without a vaccine. We've been operating in-person school five hours, five days a week, six hours a day with no COVID transmissions without a vaccine. And so I want to encourage folks to get vaccinated, but also don't let the, the vaccine be the barrier to opening schools. That will conclude my presentation. Looking forward to answering any questions you may have.
Dr. Garcia, I want to thank you very much uh, from the bottom of my heart for coming to speak with us on today. Uh, we're going to go on to board questions. Uh, we're going to start with Mr. Gonzalez Hoi. Uh, Mr. Gonzalez Hoi, uh, you could start with two questions. If uh, there is time for additional questions, um, I will loop it back around. Uh, but I'm watching the clock for different reasons, so don't just jump in there. I'll give, I promise you, I'll give it to you if it's there, okay? So uh, Mr. Gonzalez Hoi.
Thank you. Uh, thank you, Dr. Garcia. Um, I had a question, two questions, just for clarification. How many students do you serve in your district?
So uh, at the school where I'm basing this presentation off of, we have a hundred and seventeen. We also have a uh, independent charter school in our district that has about three hundred and thirty kids. They're open hybrid. They have about a hundred and twenty kids back on campus as well. And the remainder of their students are in distance learning.
Thank you. Uh, and my second question, are you doing any type of, are you scared me? Are you doing any type of uh, pool testing uh, for students?
Uh, no, we are, we are not. Um, we, um, we have been working very closely with county public health and with our um, the Marin City Health and Wellness Clinic um, and uh, some other faith organizations. So we have free testing available for anybody who wants it, but we actually aren't screening students. Um, and and to be quite honest, um, although I know it's kind of part of the governor's new plan and and OSHA and um, I, I, I obviously think the more people that we can test, the safer it is. I'm, I'm not convinced that screening asymptomatic kids is necessary for a safe school reopening. I, I think quite the contrary. We have been running school like this without screening kids and and don't have any in-school transmissions and have low transmission rates in our community. Um, and a, a lot of the early public health guidance was actually not to screen asymptomatic kids. I think there's some other issues, you know, serving the black and brown community. Um, I, I think many of our families um, would like to see a less invasive test before we go to wide, widespread student screening. Um, so I've been looking very closely at like the cough tests instead of the nasal swabs. Um, I, I think a lot of our families are going to feel more comfortable with a less invasive um, test. Um, and uh, you know, obviously if that's a requirement for us to operate, that's something that we'll And, you know, obviously if that's a requirement for us to operate, that's something that we'll do. And with this new round of CARES, CARES money, that, that might be possible, but currently where that's not what we're doing.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Gonzalez Hoi. We're going to move on to Mr. Christian. Mr. Christian, do you have two questions?
Yes, thank you, President Phillips. The first question would be the temperature, who, who does the temperature gauge at when students come or staff come to the campus? Who are your key people that handles that area?
Good question. You know, we, we have a pretty robust classified workforce. And so those, for, for our district, they're called student success coaches. But those would be what, what many folks would know as classroom aides or paraeducators. And they are mostly the folks that are managing the, the health check screening stations. We also have some of our, they happen to also be classified staff, but folks that work as like community school staff, community school managers, community school liaisons. Parent outreach workers, folks in that job class are, are doing this and also, you know, I can't underscore enough, while it's important to have dedicated roles and responsibilities. And that's a big part of, of getting back to in-person, we also have to remain flexible. If my principals and, and instructional coaches need to jump in and screen a, screen, you know, man a temperature screening station, that's what they're doing.
Okay, thank you. That was the first question. The second question would be far as, you know, students, I'm talking about the old, the older students. Do, do they have a difficult time wearing a mask throughout the day or do they follow the protocols or so forth pertaining to COVID nineteen?
Our week, so you know, our secondary is sixth through eighth graders. They're really pretty good and I, I, I gotta say I think all kids need redirecting sometimes. But you know, no, 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 there's no such thing as a perfect human being. What I, what I notice is that when we do redirect our students. There is a, a, a real graciousness in, in the way that, you know, they'll, they'll pull their mask up or you know, I've been, I've been at this as a, as a teacher and an instructional coach and a principal and a superintendent for over twenty years. And a, a, a lot of the, the opposition or defiance that we might have experienced in redirecting our student behavior in past years just is, is not a thing this year. So it's a really easy conversation, hey, pull your mask up, oh, sorry, I forgot. You know, they're really pretty good at it. The times where you see masks starting to come down a little is, you know, we're outside running around trying to play. I get hot and sweaty. I don't see it in the building very much, if at all. I would say as some of the other folks on here that have in-person secondary programs. The thing I see that's most challenging for the secondary school students is that social distancing piece. We, we've like striped out our hallways, we've put arrows. We, we, that are six feet apart, we try to make them stand at the tip of the arrow when they're in line to help remind them of, of social distancing. And not only did we spend two weeks on that behavior to kick off the school year. After Christmas break, we spent like two more days just reteaching it because we noticed prior to the Christmas break that you know, people were starting to get a little, a little, a little too relaxed. And so we wanted to really reset the expectation. And, and let everybody know, you know, what we were striving for and it's key to us staying open and, and I think not having virus transmission. People are really attending to it in, in some really great ways.
Right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Christian, and we probably are. So we're going to move on to Trustee Smith Folds.
Thank you so much. Can you please tell me the budget that you operate under? How much money do you have?
So we are a basic aid school district. We have a, a budget of about seven million dollars.
Okay, and that's for the, you have about four hundred kids?
Sorry, so the, yeah, well, if you combine it, you know, it's an independent charter school, so they kind of take their money right off the top and then we, we don't really get to, you know, tell them how to spend it, right? But yeah, combined for, for, for all the kids, it's, it's about eleven million. It's about seven million for, for the, for Base Side M O K.
Okay, and then finally, can you walk me through the day of a teacher, a middle school teacher?
Um, yeah, I can. They arrive to work at about eight A M. They have about an hour of prep. Kids will start arriving in their classroom about eight forty-five, but the expectation is they're arriving with a paraeducator, so that paraeducator would engage them in a warm-up activity until about nine A M. Nine A M, live instruction starts. And they have two classes with that one cohort of students. So we have we have single subject teachers that have more than one credential. So I have, I have in the, in, in the same body, I have a social, social studies and a English credential. And then in another body, I have a math and science credential. So they do two sections of each, of each core content area. And then the classes rotate and they do their other two sections. There's a fifteen-minute break, there's a half an hour duty free lunch for the teacher in there. At two P M, they turn their, their last cohort of students back over to the student success coach. And they go for an hour of departmental collaboration. And then the kids have another hour from two to three P M where they're doing computer-based interventions that are asynchronous distance learning, if you will, much like a lot of the other folks that presented tonight. When we launched this year, we were doing synchronous distance learning with our in-person instruction. We found that to be really, really hard. Managing the group of kids in front of you while trying to teach a group of kids online. I don't think was creating the most robust distance learning experience. When we got our numbers down enough that we only have nine kids left on distance learning. We broke out a teacher to just only teach distance learning a hundred percent. And all of the rest of our teachers and kids are in-person, learning in-person.
Thank you. Those are my two questions.
Thank you very much, ma'am. We are now going to go on to Mrs. Reckler.
Thank you and thank you for being here. Thank you for your presentation. For your older students' middle school, will you describe lunch?
Yeah, I'd be happy to. It's really interesting, I think, the opportunity that this pandemic provides us to think of how we can transform our school system. Lunch is one of those ways. As I think our like unidirectional movement through hallways and maybe wearing masks in cold and flu season isn't a bad idea even when there's no coronavirus. But I had the great honor of being visited by the Japanese Food Service Association last spring, prior to, prior to the pandemic. They wanted to learn how we could run organic farm-to-fork food service program. And I wanted to learn whatever I could from them. And one of the biggest takeaways that I got from, from that cultural exchange was that there's no such thing as a school cafeteria really in Japan. The idea of bringing all the kids to one place and eating in a cafeteria style is not how they operate. So they have a central kitchen, they prepare food, a student comes down, gets the food, brings it to the classroom. The kids all eat and then they clean up. And then either the same student or another student brings back all the dirty dishes and all the food waste back to that central kitchen where they're clean up. So I was given that model prior to the pandemic and as we started to try to problem solve food service. I decided that what was working in Japan might just work for us and that's exactly how we do it. Our chefs prepare all the breakfast, breakfast, all the lunch. Representative student will go down from each classroom, get the lunches or the breakfast for each class, bring them up. The kids eat, we clean up and then, and then they, they bust the dirty dishes back to the cafeteria. So there, there is no traditional school cafeteria moment. And anyone who's been in education for a long time, even at the best schools, even at the communist schools, even at the schools that win awards for school culture and climate. A cafeteria with hundreds of kids can sometimes be a tad chaotic. And there are a lot of things that happen in a cafeteria that I think sometimes don't always have the most positive effects on school culture and climate. Now that being said, I think it's great to break bread with each other from time to time. It's a way to build relationships. It's culturally important to many of us, but I'm not sure that I'm going to go back to mass everyone in the cafeteria. This seems to be working really, really well. The traditional answer to not having food in the classroom is because of pests, of rodents, bugs. But because of the enhanced cleaning that we have to do due to COVID nineteen and because of everybody attending the cleanliness. We just haven't seen a, a, a single piece of evidence, even in our portables that are twenty-five years old and should have been replaced a while ago, we're not seeing rodent incursions. And so I do think this is an, an interesting model for, for folks to look at. And thanks for asking that question about food service.
You're welcome. And final question is, I mean, you've given us a lot, but if you were going to give us like your one learning. I think you've already said it, but if you were going to give us one learning, would you tell us what it is?
Yeah, I, I think, you know, it goes back to some of the themes I, I hit on in that presentation. It's flexibility. It's, it's having a commitment to, to opening and getting anybody and everybody back on campus that's willing to be there, working to that end. It might be one person at some campuses, it might be four people at some campuses, it might be fifteen people at some campuses. In some senses, the number doesn't matter. It's when that small group of people comes together to start problem solving, to figure out how to do this. That I really think that you'll see movement and change in your system.
Thank you so much, Dr. Garcia.
Thank you for those questions. Mr. Leong, do you have any questions?
Yes, I have one question. I was wondering if you had, oh, first off, thank you for, for that presentation. It was really insightful. So my question is, did you see or do you have any statistics on like the improved test scores from in-person learning? Or like the hybrid learning versus like online learning?
Really interesting question. We, we, we did a crazy thing last year when we, when we found out that we weren't going to take CASP. We still plan to do an end of the year map test, which is what, what, what we use as an internal benchmark for all of our kids. And we wanted to do that particularly to measure the efficacy of our distance learning program. And, and our distance learning M T S S. And this is what we found. Our kids basically maintained their trajectory for mathematics. They, they seem to have not really lost much ground in, in the spring in math. E L A, whole other story. Pretty, pretty significant learning loss we needed to mitigate. And that was part of why we, we started working so hard to figure out how to just get everybody back in person, right? And we, we have done a beginning of the year and a mid-year map test so far this year. I am hoping to take a CASP test, the bridge cap test in the spring. My understanding is it's only going to be twenty-five questions, although I know that it's still at a very high level, it still may not happen. We will continue map testing throughout the year, but hoping to take that CASP test. What we have seen is some really tremendous academic growth from the small class sizes that we have in person. That shouldn't be surprising. Every piece of academic research that we have says that small class sizes are one of the best things that we can do to mitigate learning loss and or accelerate learning in advanced students. There, there's decades worth of research that kind of suggests that at a class size of thirteen, fourteen, fifteen to one that, that we would see really improved academics. And we are absolutely seeing that in both E L A and math. So I'm really excited for, for any round of spring data. I think that'll be one other really critical piece of data arguing for school reopening. Along with the, the low rates of in-school transmission.
Thank you. That was really insightful. I appreciate it.
Thank you very much, Mr. Leong. We are running low on time, but I do want to give my questions away. Is there a board member who has a follow-up question? I see Reckler shaking her head, no. I see Mrs. Smith Folds shaking her head, no. I see Mr. Christian shaking his head, no, let me move to the next screen. I miss, I see, there he is. I see Mr. Gonzalez Hoi shaking his head, no. I see Mr. Duffy doing something. I'm sorry, I couldn't help myself. So anyhow, with that said, the questions that I was going to give away, I'm going to keep. Dr. Ge, if I do need to reach out to you, I, I, I hope that you will answer the call. And if the board or the superintendent needs to do the same, you know, we'll talk about that later on. But Dr. J, I just want to thank you so much, Dr. Garcia, for coming and speaking with us today and sharing the lessons learned from your school district. We appreciate the time. And not only do we appreciate the time that everybody has spent, but when somebody learns something on their own and they have gone through it and then they take the time to pass that on, that means a lot because you didn't come by this information easily. You came by this information to work. So once again, thank you so much for coming here today. We greatly appreciate you, your time and your expertise, sir.
Thank you for the invitation. Happy to work with Superintendent Duffy and, and staff. All of the resources, the school site specific protection plan, now the Cal OSHA plan, I don't know how many times we have to rename this plan. All of that is available at the end of the PowerPoint with links. It's also available on our school and district website for anybody that's really interested in a, a finer grain of specifics than what I may have provided.
Thank you so much, sir. So at this moment, we are going to move to public comment. I'm going to start public comment, but I'm going to ask for an extension of the meeting a little later on. So if you have a comment that you would like to make now is the time to put your hand up. Once we move to public comment, only those people who have their hands up will be called on. So going once, going twice. Three times, I see thirteen hands in the Zoom. I just saw fourteen. Please start.
Okay, tonight I'll do it. The first person to speak is Carrie Shulman. And you can unmute.
Hi, my name's Carrie Shulman, as you just heard, and I have a kindergartner and second grader in the district. I'm also a member of W C C Safe Open Schools, which is a group of caregivers and teachers across all five areas of the district who want our schools to reopen. I've attended all the COVID nineteen study sessions and heard all the health experts say that we can reopen this year. I've also heard that we can reopen from the Harvard Global Health Institute, the CDC and even Dr. Fauci. On February tenth, Contra Costa County met the California threshold for reopening. We need to open our schools in a hybrid model this spring. In addition, all adults should be able to receive the vaccine by this summer. So there is no reason why our schools shouldn't fully reopen this fall. Many caregivers, including myself, are getting really frustrated that we still don't have any reopening plans. It feels like you're intentionally spreading out these study sessions as a stalling tactic. I've started hearing talk about taking more drastic measures that could be very costly for our district, but I really don't want it to come to that. We need a reopening plan that incorporates input from school site leaders and gives them some flexibility to adjust plans to their individual sites. It is also essential that you survey the teachers so you can understand their concerns and make sure they are addressed in their reopening plans. Lastly, many kids have been traumatized by COVID nineteen and the solitude of distance learning. So it is essential that you provide sufficient mental health resources. So it is essential that you provide sufficient mental health resources in our reopening plans. So many children in our district were already behind even before COVID started. As the other districts around us are opening, please don't let our children continue to spiral backwards. Please reopen our schools for hybrid learning this spring and fully reopen our schools next fall. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, to the folks that raised your hand, you're supposed to have a first and last name. So there's a couple at the bottom, if you could rename yourself or log out and come right back in with another name. So you can do that, that'd be great. Um, our next speaker is Katie Brohan. You may unmute.
Hi, everyone. My name's Katie Brohan. Can y'all hear me? All right. Um, first of all, I echo everything Carrie just said. I have a third grader in the district. Next year, I'm also going to have a kindergartner and a preschooler. I'm also a member of WCC Safe Open Schools. I'm making a plea to the district to plan to fully reopen schools in fall 2021, if not sooner. If you want to test drive easing students back in, like the great speakers tonight described, the time to do that is right now, not in the fall. I don't need to waste my time reminding you that we've already met the state threshold to allow case to six instruction for nearly two weeks. If it isn't clear to you already that the science supports safe school reopening, I don't know what will convince you. If Dr. G didn't just convince you, I don't know who could. I'm an education researcher with 15 years of experience focused on education strategies designed to close equity gaps. I work full-time. I use my hard-earned PhD to make a difference and set a good example for my children, for my daughter. But as more and more adults get vaccinated, the expectation is that we need to return to work in person. Yet with an incoming kindergartner facing down the barrel of hybrid instruction, it's not clear how that's going to work for me and my family. More than four times as many women as men have left the workforce due to COVID. If you continue to keep schools closed, not only are you perpetuating racial equity gaps among our children, you're perpetuating gender equity gaps among our adults. And I'm just going to end quoting what Dr. G said earlier. Opening schools is an act of community care. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Jillian BK. You may unmute.
Hi, sorry, I thought I had correctly renamed myself. It's Jillian Banks Kong, and um, I'm going to be brief tonight because I also have my son here with me. Um, and he wants to speak. So I just wanted to say in response to the questions about why are we pushing? Why do we want to open now? What's the rush? The rush is that, as we heard from uh, several of the speakers tonight, that they started their planning way back in June 2020 or sooner. And I feel that if we don't start pushing or continue pushing now, that we may not even open in fall. I don't know what the school district has been doing the entire year. Uh, Mr. Duffy, it's really frustrating to sit here for five hours watching you stretch and yawn. And um, I'm just really disappointed, and that's the reason that I'm pushing now. And now I'm going to pass it over to my son to speak uh, on his own behalf.
Hi, my name is Royal Banks Kong. I'm a 10th grader at Elsereo High School, and distance learning is absolutely not good for me. I've been basically trying so hard to get my grade to be good, and it leaves me exhausted at the end of the day, and it makes me furious that the district hasn't came up with a plan to reopen schools. We have been at schools for over a year, almost, and what the heck is the district doing right now? They don't have a plan, or it doesn't seem like they have a plan to reopen these schools, and that is unacceptable because it is, I know it's about health, but and the pandemic, but at home, you're facing mental health because it's very hard to have your desk be five feet away from your bed. So, yeah.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Jorge Palacios. You may unmute.
I'm sorry, I'm not in the queue, sorry.
Okay, just one moment. Our next speaker is Katie Rodriguez. You may unmute. Katie Rodriguez.
Good evening, uh, board members and um, superintendent. Uh, my name is Katie Rodriguez. I am the parent of a kindergartner in the district. And um, I first wanted to start by thanking um, uh, the board members for um, having these study sessions. I think it's been really important to make sure the community learns together about the safety in terms of reopening schools, how other districts have done it successfully. In particular, I really appreciated hearing the lessons learned from just, you know, very close to us here in the district as well as in Marin City. And um, I, I really wanted to um, emphasize tonight how important it is that we are um, moving much more quickly towards uh, a successful reopening. I agree with what a number of other parents said here tonight. Um, there is no reason we are not fully reopened by the fall, particularly if everyone is vaccinated, who wants to be vaccinated uh, for teachers and staff. And uh, I absolutely agree with um, a number of the speakers tonight about thinking about how you move into some sort of a hybrid or other small pod situation this school year to test this out um, in a way that, you know, make sure that we um, bring our kids and our teachers back safely, that we are ensuring that all the precautions are in place, and that we're addressing the learning loss and the needs of our most disadvantaged students, those with disabilities, those um, English language learners and others who are really struggling in the distance learning situation. My son asks every single day when he can go and see his teacher in person, when he can see other kids his age, and I really want to tell him soon. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Tina Hawkinson. I'm, I'm having trouble getting her, so we'll, we'll come back to that one. Jesse Montano is next.
Hello, board members. My name is Jesse Montano, and I'm a father of two adopted foster kids in our district, a kindergartner and a first grader, both with IEPs. I am gravely concerned with our lack of a plan. On February 10th, Contra Costa County met the state health threshold to allow K through six schools with approved safety plans to open for in-person instruction. Where is our safety plan? We have heard from experts at the national level, study sessions and board calls that teachers don't all need to be vaccinated to return to school. And even so, many teachers are now being prioritized in the vaccine line to get back to in-person learning. As Governor Newsom mentioned, we must not let perfect be the enemy of good. And as Dr. G said tonight, opening schools is an act of community care. We cannot wait for the fall. COVID will still be here, and we will have, have yet to learn. We must start phasing back into campus and learn to adapt to a new normal. It has now been nearly a year, and while our teachers are doing their absolute best, and I thank them, my young kids and their needs are not being met as it is their right through the public school system and us as taxpayers. My ask is simple, but the district publishes a plan with goals tied to dates and quantifiable requirements at both the district and school level, and we get weekly updates clearly outlining how close or, or, or far we are to achieving each of our goals. Furthermore, as there are incremental funds and resources from the government, we ask visibility into what we are receiving and how it's being allocated to meet our plan. Thank you.
Great, thank you. We'll try again for Jesse Montano.
Dr. Wolf, before you do that, board, it's 10:25. We do have some public speakers left and just some house cleaning that we need to do announcing the next meeting and whatnot. Um, I'm going to ask, I don't think it will take this long, but I'm going to ask if we could extend this meeting uh, for 30 minutes. Again, I don't believe that it will be 30 minutes. Uh, can I have a motion to do that, please?
I'm moved.
Thank you very much, sir. Can I have a second?
Reckler, second.
Thank you very much. It's been properly moved and seconded on the vote, Mr. Gonzalez Hoy.
Gonzalez Hoy, yes.
Thank you, sir. Uh, Christian?
Christian, yes.
And uh, Smith Foul.
Smith Foul, yes.
Thank you. Uh, Reckler?
Reckler, yes.
Leon?
Leon, yes.
Phillips, yes. Um, also, because we just extended uh, the meeting, uh, unless there are any objections, uh, we are going to, when I say 30, I'm, I'm talking about to 11 o'clock, but unless there are any objections, I'm going to let, um, again, audience, please remember, uh, because I'm trying very hard to signal when it's time to raise your hand. Um, so there's not really any excuse for anybody to miss it because I'm telegraphing it, you know, from another state. So uh, but we do have some additional hands that went up um, because of the subject matter that we're talking about. Uh, I, unless there's any objection, and I don't see any, I'm, I'm going to let um, the people who are in the Zoom with their hands raised uh, to Jesse Montano. Uh, that is the last person that will speak this evening uh, on public comment. Mr. Wolf.
Okay, uh, Tina Hawkinson, if you can unmute.
I, I am, thank you. Um, and I have not a long-prepared question or anything. I'm a parent of a ninth grade student um, at Elsereo High and who is suffering greatly. Um, so I'm very anxious to get schools to reopen. My one question, and it, it kind of a, it's an outsider question because I'm not a staff member or a teacher or anything, but I wonder, as I listen to these meetings, how come the teachers' union doesn't have a representative in these meetings? If this is like, if the whole, my understanding is that the whole stumbling block to reopening is really the teachers' union and, and parents and all that, but why isn't that voice, why isn't there anybody in these meetings who are here, we're smiling, Bill, because then maybe that's a stupid question. But it seems like that's like, until we get all voices and share and talk to each other, how can we come into an, an understanding and, and, and move on? That's all. And thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Zelan Harrison.
Hi, my name is Lon Harrison. I have two kids in the district, one at Richmond High, one at Lake. And I feel what Dr. G said is so on point, and we need to just take that and go with it. You have a superintendent there that cares about all kids learning. Black kids, we're doing super bad during this pandemic. Our kids are dying even more. And right now, what we're getting from our superintendent is not okay. We need action taken every day to get kids back in school. The ones that want to be there, let's get them back. This pandemic was horrible for black students in our district, and if we don't do something about it, shame on us. We need to get the schools open, not now, but right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Ernesto Falcone. May I mute?
Uh, good evening, everyone. I'm Ernesto Falcone. Uh, I have a, a kindergarten kid in the West Contra Costa County School District, uh, soon to be a first grader. Um, you know, we're reaching a year uh, of school closures, and it's, it's time for us to see an action and, and that's published, that's given to the community about when their schools are opening. Uh, you know, I really do appreciate the board's efforts to, to educate us. Uh, I think the January and February sessions have been extremely important to help alleviate me of the fear. Uh, and I'm here to say I am fully educated already, you know, and I've been educated now for, for a couple of weeks at least. Uh, I think Dr. Garcia and the efforts they've done is, is extraordinarily exemplar. I mean, I think it shows that you can do it. You get, you just, you have to structure the school to be safe that way. I really want to appreciate the city's rec department because that, that after-school care, that's all, all my kids got. Uh, the city had to cut some budgets and, and let go one of his instructors, and he was in tears about it because he's got no friends that he can make, uh, because there's no school for him, right? It's, and so um, we need a concrete reopening plan. It needs to be this school year, it needs to be phasing in students so we learn how to do it safely, particularly low-income students that don't even have broadband access to do the remote education, as, as difficult that is. President Biden said, where everyone's vaccinated by July, Newsom setting, uh, the governor is setting aside 10% of the supply for teachers going in person now, starting March 1st. So vaccination is no longer an excuse. We have no excuse to start reopening a plan after tonight, and I thank everyone, and I, and I hope we move forward.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Jules. You may unmute, and please say your first and last name.
Hi, sorry about that. I'm on my phone because it's so late. Um, hi, my name is Juliette Christian Smith, and I have a first grader in the district. Um, I'm a scientist, and um, I think that the science here is very clear. I have also attended these study sessions. And um, along with the science being clear, the trustees responsibility here is also clear. And I think what you're hearing from the parents is that, um, and the other callers, is that we need you to step up. We need you to step up with love and with leadership. We need you to follow the examples set by people like Dr. Garcia and many of the other schools that have reopened. Parents are getting organized because no one else seems to be. We need you to get solutions. We need concrete reopening plans, and we need them now. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Sarah Anzia. You may unmute.
Hi, good evening. I'm Sarah Anzia. I'm the parent of two kids in WCC USD schools, both in elementary school, and I'm part of the WCC Safe Open Schools Group. Thanks again uh, for putting on yet another informative and helpful study session. The speakers have been great. My kids are desperate to get back in school. They don't understand why my sister, their aunt, who's a teacher in the San Rafael District, is going back to work. She teaches sixth grade. They don't understand why they see kids their age going to school in the Catholic school down the road. Now even Berkeley USD has announced their timeline. So to the board, I get that you have a lot of constituencies to listen and respond to, but there is one, one constituency that is most important here, the one we all have an interest in supporting, and that is the kids of this district. A year ago, I know it wasn't clear how to best serve the kids. I get that, but it's clear now, and now is the time that you should be showing us your plan and your timeline to bring kids back to in-person learning. To say that we will be in some kind of hybrid model in the fall is just unacceptable. Teachers are being vaccinated, case numbers are falling. Districts and private schools across the country have shown that this can be done safely, even districts that look like ours. We know distance, distance learning is not working as well as in-person instruction, especially for our most vulnerable kids. The excuses for remaining in 100% distance, distance learning are disappearing. In my view, they've already disappeared. We should be in a hybrid model now. To set that as a goal for August makes no sense. So please show us your plan, show us your timeline. You are responsible for the education of kids in this district.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Jorge Rojas, Rosas.
Hello, good evening. My name is Jorge Rosas. I am a former WCC USD district student and currently a student at UC Berkeley. And I would just like to say these things in regards to the example of, you know, Marin City with Dr. G and, you know, all of these uh, vaccination uh, plans that Joe Biden, President Joe Biden and Gavin Newsom are showing out. Um, this is, this is the thing. This is not about reopening in terms of having a concrete plan because it's possible to have a concrete plan. I mean, you guys have had a year to think about this, but here's the thing. This is not a plan issue. This is a funding issue. Marin City is just that, a city. It's not a county. You know, there's multiple cities in this county, Richmond, Canoa, Walnut Creek, Concord, et cetera, that make less than half the median income. Each family has less income than the average person within Marin City, Marin County. So it is not possible to be able to reopen schools without the appropriate funding for teachers, for staff, and for resources. I've gone to uh, an elementary school, Washington Elementary School in Richmond, Point Richmond. They didn't even have soap most of the time. My teacher had to ask for wish lists just so we can get money from our parents to give to them because district does not do it for them. I've seen many teachers whom I've loved leave because they're not paid well to teach these students, and this is in-person. This is not, you know, this is not on Zoom. So UC Berkeley, with millions of dollars, they still not opening their schools. They have a vaccination plan, they have all of these concrete phases for us to go through, and we're still not opening. Why? Because it is all about funding. They have funding and they're still not opening. So unless the WCC USD has an appropriate funding for staff members and for teachers, I believe that it's not possible to go in there into schools so we can suffer more from these uh, incidents. I believe that it's not possible to go in there into schools so we can suffer more from these infections. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Jeffrey Bean. You may unmute.
Can you hear me? Good. Hi, I'm Jeffrey Bean. I teach elementary school in the district. I have been listening on and off to these study sessions. I appreciate the thought and time that the board is putting into learning about all the possibilities. I've heard a few guests advocate for a hybrid model. Which I find a little bit concerning. I hope and pray that we can be back full-time in the fall. And any opportunity to be in person with my students, I would love. The times I've been able to see my students when they come to pick up books or supplies at the schools are very valuable to me. But I worry about the academic expediency of having a system where. I have eleven students sitting behind plexiglass while I'm simultaneously, according to one of the guests today. Teaching students online, and it sounded like that would really be more of an online teaching with a few students in the classroom with you, which. I don't know how effective that would be. I mean, managing a class of students with a whole lot of, it sounds like a whole lot of rules. To keep them safe while simultaneously doing the online thing. I mean, I would love to see my students in person. I think we might need to wait until we can have a full-time situation in the fall. Thank you for hearing me. Appreciate it.
Our next speaker is Andrea Garcia. You may unmute.
Good evening, board. I want to thank our president, Ms. Natalie, for asking her teachers about what they needed. In order to effectively and safely open their schools. As a special ed preschool teacher, I appreciate that very much. So what I hear is that we need enough resources to keep everyone safe, of course. We obviously do not have the same means as St. Joseph's. I mean, from four to twenty-one thousand a year in tuition? Wow. Will the district be able to provide in the same way? Now, this also includes more adult support. As Natalie mentioned, there are two aides per classroom in their institution. Since we're comparing with St. Joseph's standards, I am assuming the district will provide the same resources. Since I teach special ed pre-K, I may need more than two aides to keep my kiddos safe. I have runners, and I have a lot of kids who need. Something in their mouth to keep them from their anxieties in check. My kiddos need extensive support, as I mentioned. And some of my adults are not able to be vaccinated due to health reasons. Therefore, what will the protocol for our staff, kiddos, and parents be to keep everyone safe? I encourage you, board, please ask your teachers and include them in these discussions. I did not see a teacher in the panel. You need their input and their expertise. Thank you.
Our last speaker that had their hand up when we did the grouping is Jesse Montano. You may unmute.
Hi, can you hear me? Hello?
Yes.
Okay, great. My name is Jesse Montano, and I'm a father of two adopted foster kids in our district. A kindergartner and a first grader, both with IEPs. I'm gravely concerned with our lack of a plan. On February tenth, Contra Costa County met the state health threshold. To allow K through six schools with approved safety plans to open for in-person instruction. Where is our safety plan? We have heard from experts at the national level, study sessions and board calls. That teachers don't all need to be vaccinated to return to school. And even so, many teachers are now being prioritized in the vaccine line to get back to in-person learning. As Governor Newsom mentioned, we must not let perfect be the enemy of good. As Dr. G said tonight, opening schools is an act of community care. We cannot wait for the fall. COVID will still be here, and we will not, we will have yet to learn. We must start phasing back into campus and learn to adapt to a new normal. It has now been nearly a year, and while our teachers are doing their absolute best, and I thank them. My young kids and their needs are not being met. That is.
I'm sorry, sir. I just, did you go already? Are you doing a second comment in this period?
Oh, okay. It must have been accident. I thought that you guys didn't hear me the first time around.
Okay. I didn't mean to be rude. I just trying to be fair.
No, yes, I apologize.
Okay, that, that would be our final public comment.
Okay, thank you so much to everybody who called in. We did hear you, and we do appreciate your comments. Once again, the board is not having discussion on this evening about this. It will, the discussion will come though. So what we are going to do now is we are going to move on to item C. Which is comments from the Board of Education, and we're gonna go in the same order that we've been going in with Mr. Gonzalez Hoi first.
Thank you, President Phillips. Sorry, I'm trying to find my note for these comments. I just wanted to first start with my background for, for, for tonight. I just want to encourage people to please be in the lookout for Antoine, who's been missing for a while. And family and friends every day at three PM are passing out flyers. You can find the information on Facebook. I know Mr. Duffy is putting something out tomorrow. And he's mentioning it at the board meeting on Wednesday, but I just wanted to make sure that we said something tonight. For whoever's left watching. And that he's found soon. He's a student from Kennedy. I did want to request, we've gotten a few emails about an update on the superintendent search. I think it'd be good just to give like a quick update at one of our very, like, maybe the. Possible next meeting, not this one, this Wednesday, but the next one where we can just give an update of where we are. Just so the community knows what's going on. I think that would help. And then I did want to clarify at the last meeting. I mentioned a wrong date for the charter committee. The charter committee today was canceled. But we extended our meeting in March, which is March fifteenth, not twenty-second, twenty seconds, the Academic Subcommittee. With Trustee Smith Folds. It's on the fifteenth from four to seven PM with Trustee Reckler for the charter committee. So I just wanted to clarify that. Thank you, Trustee Reckler, and thank you for tonight. That's it.
Thank you, sir. And we're gonna move on to Mr. Christian. Do you have any comments, sir?
Yes, I thank you, President Phillips. I want to thank all the presenters who came this evening to present, to shed light on reopening. And all that information is well-received, and so I just want to thank all the presenters. And then also want to mention, coming up, on the first Monday in March, will be the Safety. Committee, meeting, the District Safety Committee meeting will be on the first Monday in March. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Christian, for those comments. Mrs. Smith Folds, do you have any comments?
Sure, I just want to reiterate some things that I learned tonight that I want to make sure that the district hears and that we can do. Our best to get everything ready. An assistant in every class, there's gated communities, cameras on campus, enough staff to escort students. H thirteen HEPA air purifiers for every classroom, hallways, gym, and lunchroom, forty-by-forty tent, certified medical assistant. On staff to assist with contact tracing, professional development, nurses on campus, surveys. Electronic static sprayer, updated Wi-Fi for outdoor learning, substitutes on deck. Person to call and do exposure notifications, dedicated recess and bathroom times, no cafeteria, multiple points of entrance, we heard. Student success coaches and small sustained classes of twelve to one or thirteen to one. That's what I heard tonight, and I just want to make sure that it's known that that's what was said tonight from the presenters that came to us and saying, this is best practice. This is how they got their campuses open. So if we're looking for a plan and looking for ways to do it. We just got a playbook. So I would like to see this implemented in our schools. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Smith Folds, for your comments. We're gonna go on to Mrs. Reckler.
Great, thank you. I want to thank all the presenters, and I want to thank all the attendees, and I want to thank Demetrio for. The new date on the Charter School Committee. I'll make sure I put that down. And I hope everybody has a good night, and I appreciate everyone's efforts. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mrs. Reckler, and then we're going to go next to Mr. Leung.
Yeah, so I just want to first off thank the presenters, all the information they provided was really helpful and insightful. And second, I just want to. I assure that I fully agree with the parents, and as a student, I also believe that the school should open as soon as possible. And from the experiences I've heard from my fellow peers. This distance learning has like, has now become a positive place to learn, and something should be done about that. So. Those are all my comments. Thank you.
Mr. Leung is in the house. Thank you very much, sir. All right, so we're gonna go on to my comments. I'm going to use my comment period tonight to actually give an update on the superintendent search because I did get those emails too. And I have information now, so there's no reason to make folks wait. What I'm gonna do is I'm just going to read an email that was sent to me by the search firm. Dear West Contra Costa Unified School District Board, I'm sorry, this email was sent to me. On Saturday, just so you have a frame of reference for the time. Dear West Contra Costa Unified School District Board of Trustees. The application period for your superintendent position closed February fifteenth, twenty-twenty-one at five PM. The following is a summary profile of the candidates who applied for the position. Recruitment efforts were key to securing qualified candidates. Who matched the profile developed by your board with stakeholder input. Based on our preliminary work, we estimate we will have seven to nine candidates to recommend for you as ones that should be considered for an interview. When we meet with you on March third, we will ask you to consider selecting. Four to six of these for an interview. There were forty-six requests for application packets. Of that number, following our contact with the prospective candidates, twenty-seven candidates submitted applications. As you will see, when we meet on March third, there is a good range of gender. And racial slash ethnic diversity in the pool. The twenty-seven applicants reflect experiences at various levels. The breakdown is as follows. Twelve are or have been superintendents. Five as executive director or chief. Three as assistant superintendent. Five as directors or other district office leadership role, two as principal. Note that most at the district office level also have experience at other leadership levels, e.g. principal. We are now checking references, including online search-related data in preparation for our March third closed session meeting with you. At that time, we will discuss our recommendations with you and ask you to select those candidates. From the group you would like to invite for an interview. These are scheduled for March twelve through thirteen. A few days before our March third meeting, you will receive a confidential summary of all twenty-seven candidates. A menu of possible interview questions which were determined using the position description. Online survey and stakeholders meetings, and virtual access to applicants confidential files. Prior to that meeting, we request that you consider your salary range parameters. Review the menu of interview questions, see attached, review candidate files. And consider providing some travel reimbursement to any out-of-state candidates you might invite. We recall last time you did something in the fifteen-hundred-dollar range. When you see the confidential candidate summary, you will know that we rank the candidates in three tiers. Those we are recommending for an interview, those who may warrant some further consideration, and those we are not recommending. We are prepared to discuss why we recommended or did not recommend a particular candidate. Usually it relates to current job status, quality of references. Did not meet desired qualifications, or simply did not measure up to the top candidates. The menu of possible interview questions below is not intended to be a final list. We would appreciate your selecting those that seem the most appropriate to you. Please feel free to add ones that would like. Ones that would like your colleagues, that you would like your colleagues to consider. We will review your thoughts in closed session at this week's board meeting. Best regards, stay safe, and we are looking forward to meeting with all of you. Jim Brown, Sandy Thorsten, Juan Garza, and Penny Pyle, Leadership Associates. So I just read an email to you all, verbatim, from them. So that is the update, if anybody was wondering, well, not if, I know people were wondering. So that is the update. So you all. Are up to date on where we are in the superintendent search, and that it is actually moving along. There's just been a lot of things that we've been dealing with, including. These study sessions, so sometimes I might forget to say something, so if I do, just tag me. And I'll say it like I did tonight, okay? There's no harm or malintention. In there, okay? So that concludes the board comments. The next thing we're gonna do is we're gonna go on to. Item D, the next scheduled Board of Education meeting. So we have a regular meeting this Wednesday, which is February twenty-fourth. We have a COVID nineteen. And schools listening session, which is this Friday. Thus far, we have brought in people to speak with us so we all can get educated on COVID nineteen in schools. But this Friday, the meeting is being designed. The agenda will go out very soon. But this Friday, the meeting is being designed for all of the stakeholders. To be able to let the board know what they are thinking about this. I am very sorry that this did not happen six months ago, but there is nothing that I can do about that. There is nothing that the board can do about that. I wasn't the board president then, and none of the other board members were even on the board. So we are doing what we can do now. To, to have the discussions and to try to make things right, but please. We have not been sitting on this this year. This board, I mean, we have not been sitting on this for a year. This board really did not have any control over what happened prior to December sixteenth. And I know people are frustrated, but I just hope that they're able to actually remember that. So if you have opinions, regardless of what they are, if you want to reopen, if you want to stay closed, if you want to do something in the middle. If you wish we would talk about something else, call in on Friday. And, and say that, because we're gonna be here to listen. That meeting is gonna start at six o'clock. On March third, we're gonna have a closed session meeting about the superintendent. Which is what you just heard me talk about in that email that I read, and then we're gonna have a regular board meeting on March tenth. So those are the meetings that are coming up. Please again, call in for the listening session. We know you have feelings, and we want to hear. From you regardless of where you fall on this issue, because we value you, we value our community. That said, we are going to move to adjournment. It is ten fifty-four. I said we weren't gonna get to eleven. We almost did, I'm sorry. But we're out of here for tonight. Bless you all. Stay safe. Good night.